Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Temecula City Council. We are going to call this meeting to order. And if I could, I believe Pastor Terrence Hundley is here from the Place City of Miracles Cathedral to give us our invocation.
Shall we all stand? Shall we pray? Our eternal God, we thank you for another day that you have blessed us. We come to you now, heavenly Father, in this prayer for this great city of Temecula, asking you to bless this city and all the officials in this council meeting on tonight. Lord, allow your face to shine on these servants in this community and be gracious to all. We pray for your presence and your divine direction during this city council meeting because you are with us wherever we go. We pray that this meeting focuses upon the business affairs of this great city of Temecula and the community. Grant this council wisdom and courage to know and to do what is right, good, and true. Make each one speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and respectfully when it's time to listen. May all be guided by the spirit of this community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. Let the activities in this council meeting be valuable, beneficial, productive, to enhance the quality of life in this community, state, and country. This we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good, right, and true. May it be so in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right, and please stay standing for the flag salute. Place your hand over your heart and say the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Can we please start with the roll call this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Alexander.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Mayor Ron.
Here.
Councilmember Schwank.
I'm here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Okay, so first off this evening are presentations. We have presentation of certificate of recognition to former board and commission members, several of who are here this evening joining us. It's always a pleasure to not only have just remarkable board and commission members here at the city of Temecula, but also to recognize their service and thank them for all the hard work that they've done. And so I'll call everybody's name if you want to just, after you have your name written, just join us up at the front of the podium here. And then I'll have our esteemed colleague here, Mr. Schwank, bring down the recognitions. I'd like to first call up Tiffany Baker. Tiffany was our inaugural chair of the Ready Commission, served for one year. Second on the list is Imelda Huerta. Imelda was not able to join us here tonight because she is at actually another city council meeting this evening doing her job. She was served as the inaugural vice chair of the Ready Commission, serving one year as well. Also, we have Gary Yeomans. Gary Yeomans served on the planning commission for six remarkable years and another 11 years on our public traffic safety commission. He has since sadly moved out of state. We miss him dearly, but we are going ahead and mailing him his certificate anyway, but definitely wanted to recognize him here this evening. Ron Garrio, Ron, are you here this evening? Wasn't sure if he was going to make it either. Ron served seven years on our public traffic safety commission and 24 years on our planning commission. Just a remarkable man who served our city. Really appreciate his service as well. Albert Blair served 24 years on our Old Town Local Review Board. And then last, we wanted to recognize Peg Moore. And I believe that Marcia King. Good evening. There you are. Marcia, you're going to accept this on Peg's behalf. Peg served, of course, as a founding council member for this beautiful city for four years and helped establish the city of Temecula during its founding, but also served and came back after that, served 19 years on the Old Town Local Review Board. Now Peg holds a very dear and very special place in all of our hearts, and we'll be doing some additional standalone recognition in the future, most likely in the Founder's Square in front of City Hall, I imagine. But we'll hold off on that for now and just thank you both for joining us here this evening and recognizing all the service that you provided our community over the years.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and read this if that's okay with you. All right. Tiffany? "We would like to take this opportunity to express our sincere appreciation for your public service on the Race, Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Commission. We are grateful for your contributions of time, talent, and commitment. Thank you for your involvement and dedication to the citizens of the city of Temecula, and we continue to wish you well on future endeavors." Thank you.
And Marcia, I'm going to go ahead and read this for Peg. And thank you for coming tonight. Really appreciate you being here. Yeah.
"We'd like to take this opportunity to posthumously express our sincere appreciation for Peg Moore, one of the city's founding leaders and devoted public servants who exemplified Temecula. We are grateful for her contributions of time, talent, and commitment to protect the historic charm of Old Town through her 19 years of service on the Old Town Local Review Board and four years on the city council. Her volunteerism and dedication to the citizens of the city of Temecula inspired many and is a legacy that will be remembered for generations to come." So thank you, and we love Peg dearly.
I think we need someone to take a picture. Okay, our next presentation this evening is by one of my personal favorite residents here. We have Gillian Larson talking to us today about Reality Rally. Good evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, City Staff, and everybody in Temecula. I'm talking to everyone. So before we start, I do want you to see how much fun you have, and then I've got a big challenge for you. So take it away, Jonathan. There is music, but maybe I can sing. of our three-day Fund for Funds event that we have. We're holding our much-delayed 10th anniversary on May 5th, 6th, and 7th of this year. We need to all get back to fun, and Michelle's Place certainly needs the funds. So we're inviting everybody to check out realityrally.com for those dates. Please join us. We don't raise any money without the help of everybody. And I have to say, thank you so much, city of Temecula, our council members, for the amazing support that you've been essentially for 12 years, even though this is our 10th year anniversary. But you see, I have been to Lake Elsinore, I've been to Hemet, I have been to Murrieta, I have the others all lined up, Wildamar, Paris, sorry, Paris, I haven't been to Hemet yet, but I've been to three already. All three of those cities have put in their team already. They're already donating some money for Michelle's Place. So they have challenged you, but Lake Elsinore said, bring them on, because they are going to take away that floating gnome for the ninth year in a row.
No.
So if some of you may remember, Temecula did win the first year, and that was against, basically, Murrieta was your challenger then, and then Lake Elsinore. So I invite all of you, please put in your city team. Everybody is certainly young enough. I think I'm the oldest person in the room, and I think you can all do it. And I'd love to see some city teams, some staff teams, some wellness group teams. I don't care who it is, but I want the city square flooded to do our 14 challenge checkpoints, raising money for Michelle's Place. But in addition, everybody can get tickets for the Wilson Creek Celebrity Reception for everybody, because we're all celebrities. Also, the crazy lip sync showdown, which we've had, some people I see in this room have been part of it, and that is crazy and amazing, and it's better than Hollywood could ever produce. And that is on Friday, May 6th. But the seventh, who is going to take the floating gnome home this year? So I don't see any hands raised, but maybe you're not allowed to from behind the dais, so maybe that's the case. Thank you. So that's it, raising money for Michelle's Place, three-day Fun for Funds, to have a lot of fun again, and we are all ready for it. I know we are. So thank you so much for your support. See you all there, and we will. And Mayor Matt, I'm trying to make an appointment to see you so we can talk about the mayor's stuff, because boy, do I have a fun part for you this year.
Oh, always look forward to that.
All right. You have no idea what we're going to do this year. Our theme actually is signs and signals, do not ignore them. So there you go, that's a little hint. Does anybody have any questions? And I did bring some of the previous programs with me, so you can totally take a look and see what an amazing event it is if you don't know already.
Well, I think we're definitely having a team Temecula this year, so don't worry about that. And I understand the Sheriff's Department is going to help us with the metro team, slow down the Lake Elsinore team this year.
Yeah.
For Old Town, so you know, we'll take every advantage we can get.
We want them as a team too, so keep talking, yeah.
No worries. Chief Crater, I'm looking at you. Get that Cal Fire team out there as well.
Yes, please.
I'm sure.
Awesome, thank you.
Good, look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah, there's always the skit that goes on at the beginning, and I always feel like Gillian just tries to put me in a position where it's like, what won't he do? So I guess we'll see what happens this year. It'll be, it'll be fun, it'll be fun. All right, our next presentation is by David Preciado regarding the annual comprehensive financial report. Good evening. That's a tough act to follow, so.
I was just going to say that.
The comprehensive financial report, riveting, let's do it.
She had slides, how am I going to follow this? Okay, so my name is David Preciado, I'm from Id Bailey, I'm an audit manager. First and foremost, I just want to thank you all for allowing me to participate and present for you guys tonight. We completed our financial statement audit back in December of 2021, so I just want to take some time now to briefly go over what our responsibilities as auditors were, as well as some of the results of the audit. So back in December of 2021, we had issued a unmodified opinion over the financial statements, which is a, it's just the highest level of assurance that we can give financial statements. We also, actually, I skipped the scope of work. Our scope of work was to provide an opinion on the annual comprehensive financial report. We also performed agreed-upon procedures over the city's appropriations limit calculation. So back in December, we had issued an unmodified opinion, a clean opinion, over the financial statements, again, the highest level of assurance that we can give financial statements. So within that financial statement audit, we also incorporated and considered the city's internal controls. We designed our audit procedures in a manner that would give us reasonable but not absolute assurance over the effectiveness of those internal controls. We also reviewed the required supplementary information that's held within the financial report. So we just reviewed to ensure that all of the details and information that's held within the RSI, the required supplementary information, agrees back to the basic financial statements. So that was kind of the bulk of our engagement there. The significant accounting policies that the city has in place, those are located within footnote disclosure number one. So during the fiscal year, there were no new accounting pronouncements or accounting standards that were implemented, any that would have any type of significant impact or material impact on the financial statements themselves. However, there were management estimates that were used in the preparation of the financial statements. So those included things like, or the biggest, the most significant estimates were related to the net pension liability and the net OPEB liability. So OPEB is an acronym for Other Post-Employment Benefits. So those estimates, they're going to be, they're going to be sensitive to the underlying actuarial assumptions that were used in the preparation of those estimates. So things like the discount rate, the investment rate of return, things like the healthcare trend rates, those are all included and they have an impact on the actual estimate themselves. So footnote disclosure of the financial statements, footnote disclosure number eight, that covers pension. Footnote disclosure number 14 will cover OPEB. So within those footnote disclosures, you'll see that just a 1% increase or decrease in the discount rate that's being used will have a significant impact on both the net pension liability and the OPEB liability as well. So in the case of the pension liability, 1% increase or decrease could have a swing of up to $20 million, so significant. So that fact is fully disclosed in the footnote disclosures. During the audit, there were no corrected or uncorrected misstatements that were noted during the audit, so there were no audit adjustments. Also, there were, I'm happy to report that there were no disagreements with management or any of their staff. There were no, there were also no consultations with any external accounting firms. So that would happen if there were any types of transactions that we as a firm have very little experience with. That was not the case during the audit, so those consultations were not done, they were not performed. So that in a nutshell was our audit engagement, and I don't think I missed anything else. I got kind of nervous because I haven't done one of these in so long, it's been like two years because of COVID. But yeah, I think that in a nutshell was our audit engagement. I just want to wrap up here by saying that we truly do appreciate serving as the city's auditor. We just want to thank all the members of city management, specifically within the finance department, Jennifer Hennessy and her whole team, they're great, even Mike Heslin and his whole team, they're fantastic as well. So we truly do thank you for the opportunity to serve as an auditor. So thank you, and if there's any questions, I'll try my best.
Sure. Any questions from council? All right. Well, thank you so much for coming out. You did a remarkable job. For those of you who didn't catch it, and I think it would be fair to say that Temecula, I wouldn't say we look forward to audits, but I think they're exciting times for us because it gives us an opportunity in the public, a chance to understand our financials and really vet, you know, our capabilities as a city to wisely use public funds.
Right.
And I don't want to put words in your mouth, but we did a remarkable job in the audit this year. Is that correct?
Yeah. It was fantastic. There was no complaints on our end, and really, we just truly do appreciate the cooperation from everybody over in finance. It truly was a successful audit.
Yeah, and thank you, I like ribbing you a little bit, but truly, I mean, every year we have these done, and every year I've been on the city council, it's always nice to see a clean audit report and a very healthy report card for the city of Temecula. So I appreciate your review and help with all of that. And Ms. Hennessy, as always, thanks for keeping the ship straight. So thank you so much.
Thanks.
All right. Okay, let's see. Moving on, we have board and commission reports. I believe we have Ms. Seismore here this evening. Oh, everybody's back at the dais like regular, I'm not used to that. Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah.
This is my first time up here representing the commission. I was newly elected chair for the Community Services Commission. We have five commissioners that serve on our commission. We have Commissioner Ewan Hawkes, Chris Kristofsky, Eric Levine, Gary Adi, and myself. The Community Services Commission reviews and makes recommendations on topics related to the parks and recreation element of the general plan and works to provide parks and recreation services and programs for the community. Our last meeting was last week on Monday, February 14th. We got to celebrate Valentine's Day together. And next slide. For our meeting, meeting recap for what we discussed last week, we had a presentation from Stacy Fox on the Urban Forest Management Plan. We had division reports that were presented by both Tracy Quartz and Sharice Turner. And we selected our chair and our vice chair for the calendar year 2022. I was selected to be the chair for the commission, and our vice chair will be Commissioner Gary Adi. And we did adjourn our meeting that night in gratitude for our former chair, Eric Levine, who served for two years. He served probably more around two and a half, because there was one year he was vice chair, and he filled in a lot. So we did adjourn our meeting in gratitude for him, for all of his service he's done for our commission and our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, Ms. Wilson, how about a report on the Ready Commission?
Yeah, I did just hit the wrong button. Now I see everything. Great. So good evening, Mayor, City Council, and our guests in commission. I just wanted to give you a brief update on what we've been doing with the Ready Commission. Our Ready Commission is made up of seven residents who serve together as an advisory group to the city council. We make recommendations on topics of diversity and inclusion within our city events, services, programs, policy, and enhanced community relations. Our last meeting was held on Thursday, February 10th. And next slide. The highlights of our meeting on February 10th is as follows. First, the commission sworn in its newest member, Mr. Lyman Ledger, so we are so honored to have him with all of his experience. And then the second commissioner, we reaffirm the draft equity values as previously drafted with our new commission member. And then also, we went over the cities, we had a consultant, the city of Quality Life Master Plan consultant. We worked with Matt Peters and the consultants to consider our goals, our key indicators, and the data by which to measure the performance on the equity core value. Staff and the consultants will take our feedback and return to the commission in our March meeting to finalize the recommendations that were made. The draft equity core value will then go to the Blue Ribbon Committee for its consideration. After the Blue Ribbon Committee provides this recommendation, the Quality of Life Master Plan with all the core values indicating the new equity core values will go to the city council for the final approval. I do want to add that we had a really good discussion with our Ready Commission. They had a lot of input, it was a lot of energy that was flowing, so I just wanted to say thank you to our Ready Commission because they are truly ready for this task and for this job. And I just want to thank them again for all the involvement of all the city events that they regularly attend. Lastly, our next commission meeting is going to be on March 10th, and all are invited to attend our meetings. The community can also watch our meetings online on the city's YouTube channel. And City Mayor, that completes my report.
Thank you so much. Okay, and Chief Crater, let's hear our public safety report today.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, city council members, staff, and residents. I'm going to give you the stats for 911 responses for the month of January 2022 in the city of Temecula. We had a total of 936 responses in the city limits, 735 of those were medical-related, 14 total fires, six of those being structured fires, and 47 traffic collisions. Next slide. As far as our prevention bureau and plan reviews inspections in the city for the month of January, for plan reviews, we did 335, construction inspections 274, annual inspections 294, and then 32 counter inquiries in City Hall. So that's picking up a bit. People are starting to show up in person and a little bit less of online, so. I wanted to mention one thing that we got to do this month, and that was training at the Margarita Rec Center. And we really like to thank the city for giving us this opportunity for our firefighters to really train on a real building, something other than a prop or something you would go to the training ground to do. So we were there for a week, we were able to bring in seasoned firefighters and new firefighters and teach them some basic skills on search and rescue, but more importantly, how to rescue themselves. We always think of, you know, search and rescue as looking for victims, but sometimes firefighters become victims. So as you could see in the slide, we were able to breach through walls, you know, using our tools, get up on the roof, cut some holes. Whenever there's a firefighter trapped, we do go to the roof and cut holes in the roof to get that superheated gas and smoke out of there to make it more tenable, not only for victims, but our firefighters as well. And it clears up the visibility so we can send our RIC teams in, which is other firefighters searching for down firefighters, to clear that atmosphere and give us a viable chance inside and make it more tenable for us to do our search. Next slide, please. And then also, with this training, we were able to put shields over the firefighters so they couldn't see, get them in a building they're unfamiliar with, and actually make it more real-life with sounds and noise, and kind of disorient them to get them to go back to their basics in training when they do become lost, to put out a mayday, their location, the conditions, the actions, the needs, what entryway they went into so we could be able to perform the rescues, breach through walls. we could be able to perform the rescues, breach through walls. This looks like it's easy, but you know, when you can't see what you're doing and you have to break through the wall to either get exterior or into a room that has less heat so you can survive, it's intense. We just, we don't get this training every day. And then transitioning from our 100-foot aerial onto a roof, a parapet, you know, you think you're just making a transition, and you get up there, and now there's a six-toe, eight-foot, 10-foot drop. You've got to step onto another ladder to get down, cut a hole to do ventilation. It was amazing training. Next slide. Also, another thing we have here in the city of Temecula is our urban search and rescue team. This trailer is housed at Station 73. We don't get these calls much, so it was nice to rotate some of that wood out. The reason we would do any type of shoring like this is if we have an earthquake, any kind of natural disaster as far as weather, or vehicle into the building, our teams need to be able to go in and shore this building up to ensure our safety while we're trying to rescue any trapped victims in there. Sometimes we're tunneling, you might have a, go through a window that's a two-by-two to be able to get to a victim. Well, that has to be shored, strutted, and secured for our firefighters to get in there and perform that rescue and get them out safely. And it also reduces further building damage. Once a building is damaged, if it continues to collapse, then it continues to cost money. So being able to set up these, this shoring operation and also do the search, you could see up on the left, that's how we mark if an area has been searched, by who, when, the date. So it kind of brings back our search and rescue terminology and how we mark buildings or houses or city blocks on what has been searched so we don't continue to waste time, right? We know that that's already been done, and we can move on to the next area. Next slide. And this is just some techniques that we use to shore up windows and doorways and sometimes walls with the same presence in mind to rescue people. Next slide. And then roof operations, you know, a lot of people see us up on roofs cutting holes, and they wonder why, and that's to get the superheated gases out. It makes any kind of rescue or victims that are inside, it makes that atmosphere more tenable, gets the smoke, heat, and gas off them so we could get in and perform a search and rescue rapidly. That is our first concern, is rescue of victims and also their pets as well, because they are family members. So you could have an offensive operation or a defensive operation. On large commercial structures like this, which we don't get a whole lot of time on unless it's a real incident for training, put an offensive hole over the fire to limit that spread and then drop back into a defensive position so we can, you know, basically cut that fire off so we don't lose the whole building. So a lot of skill involved here, and it was great to get our firefighters out to be able to perform this training. And what an amazing opportunity here in the city of Temecula. We just, we don't see this very often, so. We also did bring out one other group. Next slide. Our TCC members. Opportunity for them to get out at night and actually perform their search and rescue techniques, their first aid, to locate victims, to shut off gas, to shut off electricity, to shut off water, to limit damage and serve the community. These are all volunteers, so it was nice to get them out and actually perform this training instead of sitting in a classroom talking about it all day. It was just, hey, guess what? Tonight, you've got a drill, and we're not going to sit in the classroom, and you're going to meet us at this location, and they did an amazing job. They were excited. You got to get out and actually perform. And this building, as you can see, it's pretty messed up inside. You know, we took a little bit of time to make it more realistic. So the benefit there was truly substantial for us, not only as a fire department, but for our volunteers that serve the community. And we just want to thank you for the opportunity. And one last slide, we didn't get to it. Spark of Love. Spark of Love was amazing last year. As you could see, we received over 469 applicants. We filled 717. The difference there is, you know, people are approaching us on calls or maybe calls we went on in the city where people lost their property due to fires. We were able to step in and really fill that void. And we'd like to thank the community. You know, we collected almost 6,000 toys from the community. Temecula is so giving and gracious to underprivileged kids that wouldn't only maybe not get any toys, but able to get, you know, five or six toys for Christmas. So we'd like to thank you and thank you for the support of the program. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Stu?
Yeah, I do have a question. So did you simulate the smoke? Or how did you actually, because you were saying you were doing exercises where they couldn't see where they were going. So was there some sort of a...
What we did was usually we have fire hoods that we wear. It has a hole over the face where you can see. We just turned those around, and so you can't see anything. We weren't able to do smoke or heat conditions in the building. Just, we didn't want a bunch of calls coming out or actually burn it down, not on purpose, but have a real fire. So no, we just...
That would be bad.
We just covered their face with the fire hood and, you know, simulated it that way.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you, chief. Appreciate the report.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, do we have any public comments this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do. We have several public comments on non-agendized items. So the rules are printed in the agenda, and I will go ahead and start calling up individuals. The first speaker is Melissa Duran, to be followed by Junior Gomez.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Matt Ryan and city council members. My name is Melissa Duran, and I am the 2022 NARAP Temecula Valley President. NARAP stands for the National Association of Hispanic Real Estate Professionals. Today I have with me a few of my board of directors that are part of the National Advocacy Committee. I have Junior Gomez, Vice President, Clara Asimakopoulos, Governor of Affairs Director, Imelda Manzo, who is our NACO Regional, Hortensia Sandual, Treasurer, Maria Rayano, Secretary, Jose Fonseca, Education, Adriana Buris, which was our 2020-2021 President. NARAP is a purpose-driven organization that is propelled by a passionate combination of entrepreneurial spirit, cultural heritage, and the advocacy of its members. NARAP was founded in 1999 by Ernie Reyes and Gary Acosta. Both Ernie and Gary wanted to create a place for Hispanic real estate professionals to thrive and better serve the community. In 1999, we were the only trade organization in the real estate market that caters specifically to the Hispanic business professional, pursuing our mission to advance sustainable Hispanic homeownership and create a platform for industry professionals to use their unique voice and make real change within our community. Our members, our leaders, our partners, and our friends. Together, we are the voice of Hispanic real estate, our network of over 40,000 active members, over 100 local chapters, and projecting an annual purchase power of $1.9 trillion at the end of 2022. The Hispanic community is the nation's largest and fastest-growing minority group and are reshaping the way goods and services are delivered across the marketplace. Hispanics are expected to become a key driver in the first-time homebuyer market and will come from us over half of all new homeowners. Now, if I may, I would love to share with you our NARAP mission. Our mission is to advance sustainable Hispanic homeownership. NARAP accomplishes its mission by educating and empowering the real estate professionals who serve Hispanic homebuyers and sellers, advocating for public policy that supports the trade association's mission, facilitating relationships among industry stakeholders, real estate practitioners, and other housing industry professionals. Thank you, Mayor Matt Ryan and city council members, for your attention this evening. We look forward to meeting each one of you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Junior Gomez, to be followed by Imelda Manzo.
Evening. Good evening, Mayor Matt Ryan and city council members. My name is Junior Gomez, and I'm the 2022 NARAP Temecula Valley Vice President. As Melissa mentioned, we are the largest trade association in the U.S., and we fulfill our mission through educational events that we organize throughout the year. These events serve as a bridge between our Hispanic professionals in the area, our community, our affiliates, as well as our city leaders. The educational component of our events are designed to create awareness about issues affecting the Hispanic real estate consumer, discuss our current market, and provide tools and strategies to better help our professional service the Latino community. Our events are an ideal space for city leaders to share valuable information, updates, and projects happening in our beautiful communities. It is also a perfect opportunity to meet the Latino professionals that are the most influential in the Hispanic community in our city. NARAP is a network of Hispanic professionals and leaders that empower each other and that is committed to the success of our communities. Our current board is currently composed of 11 directors who volunteer their time and are committed to the NARAP national mission. We are the voice for our community, and we are eager to work with you to successfully work on benefits for our community. Thank you, Mayor Matt Ryan and city council members, for your attention this evening. We look forward to meet you and working together to educate and strengthen and promote the American dream of homeownership in Temecula.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Imelda Manzo, to be followed by Clara.
I'm the shortest one, so I'll put this down. Muy buenas noches. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Ryan and city council members. My name is Imelda Manzo, and I'm also here representing the National Association of Hispanic Real Estate Professionals, also known as NARAP. I'm also the broker-owner of Premier One Realtors. In addition, I'm part of NARAP's Hispanic Wealth Project, which is an initiative born out of the wake of the Great Recession of 2008, when Latinos lost up to 2/3 of their median household wealth. It was then that our organization set an audacious goal to help triple Hispanic household wealth by following our 10 disciplines, known as the NARAP 10, as we wholeheartedly believe that homeownership is the number-one way, the number-one strategy towards closing the wealth gap. I'm also here representing NARAP's National Advocacy Committee, whose top policy priorities revolve around three main issue areas. One, increasing the supply of housing. Two, enhancing access to affordable mortgages. And three, immigration reform. As everyone knows, our housing shortage continues to be our number-one barrier to getting our first-time homebuyers into a piece of the American dream, homeownership. I don't know if you're aware, but recent studies done by the Urban Institute predict that over the next 20 years, 70% of all new homeownership will be done by Latinos. And that is because we are the youngest demographic with an average age of 29.8. Latinos are just entering into their prime home-buying years. The lack of inventory and high labor shortage in the construction industry is costing construction costs and home prices to go up the roof, putting homes out of reach of a lot of, to a lot of these homebuyers. Thank you for your time, and I hope that we have the opportunity to meet with you in person to further discuss this issue and find solutions. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
And the next speaker is Clara. Clara, I'm sorry, I'm not going to...
Asimakopoulos.
Okay, thank you. To be followed by Mary Williams.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Ryan and city council members and staff. My name is Clara Asimakopoulos. I am the Government Affairs Director for NARAP, the Temecula Chapter, and also the broker-owner of Flagship Real Estate. NARAP is not a political organization. We are a mission-driven organization, first and foremost, advocating for policies that impact our mission. We are neither a Democrat nor a Republican organization, but we celebrate the fact that we have members of both parties in our organization. We are laser-focused on increasing homeownership opportunities for Latinos in the U.S., along with fighting for the fair and equitable immigration policies, period. NARAP has three policy buckets. First is the housing inventory. The number-one barrier to advancing sustainable Hispanic homeownership is the lack of affordable homes for sale. We champion national and local policies to increase housing production. At the local level, that means tackling zoning and land use reform. Second is access to credit. It is critical to create a lending environment that is conducive to the growing share of Latino homebuyers. In so doing, NARAP champions federal policies that make lending easier and less expensive for Latino and first-time homebuyers. Thirdly is immigration. NARAP supports immigrants who are at the core of America's economy, making up our labor force and contributing billions in economic output. We champion federal policies that provide a path to citizenship for undocumented workers, temporary protected status, TPS, holders, and deferred action for childhood arrivals, DACA. With this, I conclude, and I thank you for your time, and also look forward to meeting you all in the future to discuss our mission. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. The next speaker is Mary Williams, to be followed by Dario Bianchi.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, Mayor Matt Ryan and the Temecula Council members. Thank you. I'm Mary Williams, the President of the Board of the Temecula Valley Symphony, and I want to say thank you to you all for supporting the symphony over the recent years. You've really helped the symphony a lot and also improving the performing arts in the community of Temecula. Performing arts is very important, and it also helps raise the community and the awareness and with the youth of the symphony. And the Temecula Valley Symphony does have a youth symphony, which will be performing on March 17th at the Rec Center. And we wanted just to let everybody know also that we are performing this coming Saturday at Grace Presbyterian Church on Nichols Road, and it's a set of our orchestra members, some of our artists that will be performing in this special performance. And includes the world-renowned cellist Ruslan Beriokov. I don't know if you know who he is, but he's world-renowned cellist. He's also recently relocated to Temecula and has a home here, and he is now with the symphony, and he is our symphony's artist-in-residence. So he will be performing also this coming Saturday, along with violinist Steve Huber, the conductor and pianist and music director, John Mario, flutist Kate Prestia Schaub, Chelsea Howell, our clarinetist. And also performing with Ruslan will be four youth cellist students that are... And also performing with Ruslan will be four youth cellist students that are very phenomenal. Actually, two of them are going to the International Tchaikovsky Competition for Young Musicians, the largest competition in the world for pre-college students. And this will be being held in Europe. And two of the youth performers at that symphony, at that concert this coming Saturday will be going to that competition. And I think that that is pretty much it. Tickets can be purchased on the temeculavalleysymphony.org website. And again, I want to remind you of our youth symphony concert that the city is sponsoring at the REC Center. So once again, thank you for your support for the symphony and we do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Dario Bianchi to be followed by Freddie Shields.
I don't believe.
Dario Bianchi. Okay, Freddie Shields. Followed by Ms. Miller.
All right. Hi, how are you guys doing today? My name is Freddie Shields. I'm here to talk about the skate park and the demolition. My sponsors are DGK, local skate shop, Overcast right around the corner, Bones Wheels, Bones Bearings. So I'm kind of speaking on behalf of a lot of people in the skate community. I know you guys plan on demolishing the park. We're going to need somewhere to go and, I don't know, kind of deal with the displacement of people. So, I mean, I was looking hopefully for maybe a smaller park, maybe somewhere towards like the north or the south end, or maybe even where the pump track is. But I know from personal experience, if you don't have a place for people to go, it's going to deplace them, it's going to displace them rather, and it's just never good. You know, I was kind of raised in the streets. The nearest skate park for me was about an hour. So I was never able to reach the skate park, you know, being a youth. And, you know, honestly, it put pressure on my parents, put a lot of stress on our household because I wasn't able to get there. And, you know, they had other stuff they had to do, like providing, so they weren't able to take me. So anyways, spent a lot of time in the streets and, you know, that could be the difference in a lot with people. So I just want to make that a known fact that, yeah, these kids are going to need somewhere to go. And it's our job to kind of, you know, do right by the youth, you know, and do what you can for them. So these are kids in your community. These are people that I talk to and rub elbows with every day. So I just ask you to heavily consider where they're going to go and make that spot a nice spot for them if you can. I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you.
Thanks for coming out tonight.
The next speaker is Ms. Miller.
Good evening.
I attended the vegan event in front of the city hall on February 19, 2022. It was educational, energizing, and offered recipes for decreasing methane coming from the food production choices that we all make. However, the streets were so crowded with loud motorcycles, loud music from areas that need to be contained in the generating restaurants. You know, just turn it down. It's not everyone's choice to hear this type of venue of music. So all we need to do is ask them to retain it within the walls. The boxes up and down the street, it's just too loud. You know, maybe we don't want to be heavy-faced all over with horns and and that box music of yours. So still on the table is Closing Old Town on Saturday and Sunday for decreasing the CO2 and greenhouse gases coming from Temecula. This is a valley. I mean, it captures here. It's not even pleasant to come to a parade in this town because the air quality is so bad. And parking back in Escondido and Riverside and running shuttles up here would also decrease the pollution. However, the RTA shuts down. I mean, the bus from Escondido shuts down and doesn't come up here on the weekends. Also, you have to go to Menifee and catch a bus to Anaheim and a train back around. This is just not appropriate. I don't know who's the head of RTA this time, but they're not working on it. I don't, thank you for voting for more of these outrageous apartments. There's 40 parcels, that two acres to 30 acres that will produce over 5,000 people and 50,000 car trips a day. What are you going to do with it? You won't get to work. You're going to have to spend the night upstairs, but you've got plenty of room and you have homeless people everywhere, but you've got glamorous buildings all around you. So what's going on with these developers? They have this program where they have credits. And they will offset bisecting the Santa Margarita River or the one here, the Marietta Creek. They'll offset it and build something up a hill that you can't live in. You can't build there. And it's entirely wrong. And these developers have to quit that because in Wildomar right now on Pre lip by the hospital, they are bisecting the Santa Margarita River. They already buried it. One eighth square mile, they buried it. This is a 20-acre project. It's unbelievable. You're about to cut me off. But if my microphone's still on, I'm going to keep going. If you have friends that will speak against this, even call the police and ask them to go stop those major trucks coming up there.
Okay, Ms. Miller, thank you so much.
Dario Bianchi. Dario Bianchi, are you in the room? Okay. And Mr. Merrill, we just have one email comment. So I will go ahead and read that into the record now. It is from Tim Spencer. I'd like to add some comments to the record regarding term limits. Term limits are great. Every elected official, every elected office should have them. The citizens of Temecula should get to vote on this issue, but it should be framed in the correct way. There's a sense of pride in serving the community that you actually reside in. A simple proposal. One, a council member can serve up to three consecutive terms should they win reelection twice. Two, should a council member have the honor of serving three consecutive terms, they could not run again for a fourth consecutive term. Three, a sitting council member who was not eligible to run because they served three consecutive, they can run again on the next term. Four, a council member can serve up to six terms in their lifetime. I agreed with Councilmember Stewart, two terms, eight years is not enough to push through a major agenda. I can see Mayor Ron's point as well. As a small, well-functioning city, does Temecula really need term limits? But because we're no longer at large and council members are now by district, it's even easier for citizens' voices to be heard with their votes. I agree with Councilmember Edwards' assessment that by district was designed to get away from cronyism. But I 100% agree with Councilmember Alexander, there should be term limits for all elected officials. With this simple proposal, a citizen can serve as a council member for up to 24 years of their lifetime. They'd have to take at least one break in between and they'd still have to get reelected. Thank you for your time. Mr. Mayor, that concludes all of the comments on non-aggendized items.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, City Council reports. Who would like to go first? Mr. Stewart.
I just wanted to say that the skate park is going to be rebuilt. It's not going to be demolished and gone forever. So I just wanted to throw that out there. It's not going away. It's just going to get rebuilt. Okay. Yeah, yeah.
All right. Anyone else? Mr. Schwank.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to highlight a ribbon cutting that we did a couple of weekends ago. This is Somers Bend, the sports ranch at Somers Bend. And I really just want to bring this to the public's attention. If you haven't been out there, please make your way out there. This is quite a beautiful facility. Lit basketball fields, courts, soccer fields, baseball fields. There is an open space, playground, obviously. Restrooms is a key component out there. When we were cutting the ribbon, I was thinking about how long this took to happen. And it was something like over 20 years. That crossed multiple councils, multiple staff, different builders. But we finally bring this to the community. One thing that we didn't cut the ribbon on out there, and I'd like us to consider doing it when they do, is this development will have about 10 miles of trails, off-street trails in this community. And when we're ready to accept those, I'd like to make another trip out there and cut that ribbon because I think, again, that's another wonderful addition to our community. So that's Somers Bend. Thank you for the slide. I wanted to bring a couple of other items forward. And I spoke with our mayor about this and I felt like this is probably the best, cleanest way to do it. As you know, our commissioners serve as advisory and advisory roles to the city council. I'd like to ask the Executive Director for the Ready Commission to prepare an item related to transit, transit equity within the city and how that relates to the population that RTA serves here in the city of Temecula. And I can work with you on that on the side to really sort of distill down what I'm going for. But I'd really like to leverage some of the relationships we have. Not to mention, you know, several commissioners have reached out on this topic and really something that they're passionate about. So with consensus of the five of us, I'd like that to be on a future Ready Commission agenda. And then along those same lines with public traffic safety, I'd like us to, and I know we did it in the past, or I believe we might have done it in the past, we have some sort of gap analysis for sidewalks and those connections. It probably needs to be updated along with some of our intersections that don't have four, you know, crosswalks. Many of them have three. We started doing leading pedestrian intervals, which are really great. They give a pedestrian a few seconds to enter into the intersection. I'd really like to work with you, Pat, and come up with some sort of framework to bring an item to public traffic safety, again, with the consensus of the council here, to look at that with respect to, again, that connectivity and pedestrian safety.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Alexander? No, go ahead.
All right, I think I have a slide here. All right, so this morning, I was invited about last week by Chris from the Temecula Valley Freedom Alliance. We have a couple of parents here currently today right now who are in our audience. So I just want to thank you guys for being out there this morning. It was cold and wet, but it was really worth it. This is a grassroots organization that has started here in Temecula. And they are all about freedom and the ability for parents to decide for their children's vaccinations and masks. So I just want to let you all know that I am in full support of you. I will continue and I thank you so much for all your involvement as trying to give our children the ability to be free from anything that's coming down from the state or beyond. So thank you very much and that's my report for today.
Thank you. Okay, and I think I have one slide, perhaps. There it is. Don't forget that Read Across America Day is coming up, March 2nd. We participate in that almost every year. It's been a little rough over the last couple of years, but we've, as a city and city council, have always been excited to go to our local elementary schools and read our favorite books. We instead this year recorded our book reading. And I think we all did it this time, right? We've all gotten, including some of the staff, city manager, other folks, read their books. I read Section 602 of the California Penal Code on trespassing. It was super exciting. So I'm looking forward to the second graders getting a little bit of that. But, you know, it's always a great event and I'm glad to see that we're still keeping up the tradition, even though virtually at least. So thank you for that. And then the only other thing I wanted to mention is we had a great meeting this morning with Congressman Ken Calvert. He came to City Hall. And although his future district is going to be slightly different than it has been and no longer include the city of Temecula or Marietta, which is disappointing, Congressman Calvert is still what the second-ranking member in the House today. And, you know, has always been a very stalwart champion of the city of Temecula, especially with regard to our transportation funding and the work done on flood protection for Marietta Creek. So it was a great meeting with him and we had a lot of, Pat, you know, basically put out all of the projects we're working on in the city of Temecula and all the areas where we could use federal support and look forward to continuing our advocacy in Washington, DC to make sure that our priorities become their priorities. So thank you Congressman Calvert for joining us this morning. Okay, any others? No? All right, so moving on, we are going to the consent calendar. Item number one is waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Item number two, approve action minutes of February 8, 2022. Item number three, approve list of demands. Number four, approve increase to the contingency for the Sam Hicks Monument Park Perimeter Fencing Project PW 20-12. Item number five, authorize the purchase of a Vermeer vacuum extractor for the Public Works Street Maintenance Division. Item number six, approve the cumulative purchase of materials, equipment, and supplies to exceed $60,000 with McCain Inc. for fiscal year 2122. Seven, approve the Second Amendment to the Agreement with Mark Thomas and Company, Inc. for the I-15 Congestion Relief Project PW 19-02. Eight, approve purchase and sale agreement for the acquisition of certain property interests on assessor's parcel number 910281-001 in connection with the I-15 French Valley Parkway Improvements Phase II PW 16-01. Item number nine, approve purchase and sale agreement for acquisition of certain property interests on assessor parcel number 910271002, 910271005, 006, 007, and 008 in connection with the I-15 French Valley Parkway Improvements Phase II PW 16-01. And item number 10, approve possession and use agreement for acquisition of certain property interests on assessor parcel number 910100018 in connection with the I-15 French Valley Parkway Improvements Phase II PW 16-01. And finally, oh, no, two more. Approve settlement dismantle costs and loss of advertising rent agreement in connection with I-15 French Valley Parkway Improvements Phase II PW 16-01. And item number 12, establish always stop control at the intersection of Wolf Creek Drive South and Teton Trail Fireside Drive.
Move approval.
All right, that was, wow, that was exciting. Just let me break a couple of those down for you because I kind of feel like maybe we need a little bit of additional explanation. The $75,000 vacuum cleaner, for instance. I just wanted to ask our Public Works Director if he would just explain that one for us, please.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. The device that we will be purchasing, the Vermeer vacuum extractor, is essentially a heavy-duty vacuum cleaner that our maintenance division uses to clean out catch basins. So the inlets for the storm drain system collect debris in them and we use that to suck out the debris and keep those clean.
All right, that's exciting. Look at that. And then all of the items regarding purchase and sale agreement and use of properties related to the I-15 project as that moves forward. And if you just want to maybe say a couple of quick words there.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. So the four items you just read are the last four acquisitions that we are needing to complete in order to have all the property interests that we need for that I-15 French Valley Parkway Phase II project. So with those acquisitions, we will have completed all of the right-of-way necessary for the project. And we're able to get certification of that, get allocation of our funding. And we intend to move forward with soliciting bids, construction bids for the project this summer and starting construction in the fall.
All right, very exciting. Thank you so much. All right, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. All right, and that passes 5-0. I am going to recess this meeting to Mr. Stewart.
I will call the meeting of the Temecula Community Service District to order. Do we have any, oh, just please note we're all still here. Do we have any public comments?
Mr. President, we do not have any public comments on non-aggendized items. When you get to item number 14, I do have one comment there.
Okay, so we have our consent calendar, which is number 13, to approve the action minutes of February 8, 2022.
I'll move consent.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Please vote. All right, that passes 5-0. Now it's on to item number 14, consider update regarding proposed Temecula Culture Fest and provide general direction regarding the same. So I believe we have a staff report.
Yes, Mr. President, we do. I'd like to bring up our events team. We have Willa Augustine and Tracy Courts. They're going to provide a presentation to you, and just as a little bit of a refresher for anyone who wasn't quite up to speed on this item, this was originally suggested by the liaisons to the Ready Commission at the time Mayor Marian Edwards and current Mayor Matt Ron. And it's gone before the Ready Commission two times. Both times, staff has received direction and suggestions as to what this event should include. So our capable events staff has taken that input and put together some suggestions for what this event could look like, and they'll provide you with that overview now.
Hi, good evening, Mr. President and Board of Directors. I'm Willa Augustine, and this is Tracy Courts. I wanted to introduce ourselves in case you didn't recognize us in office clothes, because typically we're in the red staff shirt, the sunglasses, and the hat. So here we are, professionally. Dawn is usually the one to do the report. Unfortunately, she did have eye surgery last week, and she's at home resting. She's doing well, so we are filling in tonight. We're here to present an update on a new event, Temecula Culture Fest, celebrating the diverse minds and beliefs held by cultures around the world.
So, the Ready Commission initially discussed this cultural event at the request of the council liaisons, Mayor Ron and Councilmember Edwards. Their recommendations include the following: A single-day event held annually the weekend closest to May 21st, coinciding with World Cultural Diversity Day. All segments of the community should be made aware and encouraged to attend or participate. Activities could include food, drink, entertainment, education, and history. And the event should have an economic, tourism, and resource tie-in for local businesses, service providers, and nonprofits.
The events team has been brainstorming, and here's what we propose. The Temecula Culture Fest to be held on Saturday, May 21st, 2022, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. This will be a free event, held in the Civic Quad, Town Square Park, and surrounding event area, including Sam Hicks Monument Park.
So, as you can see, this slide shows the proposed event layout. As you can see, the entertainment, including live music and dance, will be showcased at the top of the steps of City Hall, which serves as our stage, and the quad lends itself to dancing. Town Square Park will hopefully be used for educational activities for kids, and we envision vendor booths set up around the Main Street Y and along Mercedes Street. These booths will include food, crafts, educational, and promotional opportunities. Sam Hicks Monument Park will have children's activities and live music as well.
We have begun gathering a list of businesses, nonprofits, school clubs, religious organizations, and so on, to invite to participate. There'll be no vendor fee this first year, as we want to get the event off the ground.
With the direction of council, passion of the Ready Commission, and support from the Community Services Commission, along with Don-tastic planning and event execution from the events team, we are confident that this will become a signature Temecula annual event for our community to experience and celebrate the rich cultural heritages and traditions from around the world. This concludes our presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you for amazing presentation. We didn't need Dawn at all. Right?
Oh, she's homesick, too.
She's watching, trust me.
She's listening.
So do we have any questions for the team here?
No, but I'm really happy that this is moving forward.
Yeah.
I don't have a question, but maybe just a comment? Would that be okay? Or you want to go that way?
No.
Okay, so I like where we're headed with this. I attended the vegan market this weekend, and I thought they did a really great job of offering like a diverse food choice. And I think, for me, and we did this at Puesca Mountain Day a few years ago, I want to say it was 2018, where we set up tables, right? And people could eat.
Oh, yeah.
And you talk about breaking bread, and you talk about having conversations, community conversations. There's a way to incorporate something along those lines, where we're sitting together, we're eating. Local vendors, obviously, like, and I think they, again, the vegan market really hit the mark for me. I didn't know this, and after the event, I came home and I was just looking for some articles, and black Americans are three times more likely to be vegan than other Americans, which I didn't know, right? And I thought that was interesting. So I think food really brings us together. So when we say we want to encourage everyone to come, we need to really entice them to come with food, with, that's appropriate for, you know, our diverse population. So I think, for me, that's really where I want to land with this, and I think, you know, and Dawn, and I know she's listening, and I know you guys are going to do a killer job, and we do need Dawn, Stu.
Yes, my goodness.
But I think we're going to do a great job, but I really want us to hone in on that, well, the why. Why are we doing it, right? So we can sit together, so we can talk, so we can learn more about each other, and we can really form bonds in that way. And I think food does that in many ways. So, those are just my thoughts, and if we can incorporate those in that final product, I think that would be great.
But it's okay if people come for the food.
Well, we want people to come for the food. Absolutely, yeah.
So what's the pleasure of the board? To move forward, I take it?
Absolutely.
Do we need to have a vote, a formal vote?
This was just on for considering a general direction, so I think the staff has general direction, and we're good to go.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have a director's report?
We do, indeed.
Oh, actually, Mr. President, I apologize. On item number 14, we did have a public speaker.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, so Adriana Burris. Adriana, I hope I'm saying that last name, Bur- Burris?
There's two Rs, you don't need to roll the Rs. It's not Hispanic.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Ron and Temecula City Council members. My name's Adriana Burris, and I'm a member of the NABREP Temecula Valley Chapter that stood up here a few minutes before you. I served as the 2020-2021 Chapter President, and this evening, I'm here as the SRCAR, Southwest Riverside County Association Realtors Housing Diversity Committee Chair for 2022. This committee was formed last year, and we are super excited to bring awareness and information to our real estate community. Our mission statement and goals: Our mission is to foster unity, equity, diversity, and inclusion in the real estate industry. Our goals are to provide education and resources to our members and our community. We break down barriers and celebrate the differences and similarities alike. We'd like to foster an environment that enables members and consumers to feel empowered, valued, respected, and safe. Promote ideas and events to further the spirit of diversity and inclusion. We'd like to open conversations and training about diversity and inclusion, and do that through business communication. Presently, we're learning and trying to guide our members on how to be involved in doing this, and trying to identify our roadmap. I would like to take this moment and compliment the city of Temecula on the formation of the Ready Commission, and let you know we look forward to working in tandem with them moving forward. We are incredibly passionate about identifying and educating our members in the community about diversity and inclusion, and supporting all local businesses and groups while doing so. And we're super eager and excited, and would love to have the opportunity to participate in the city Temecula's Culture Fest, the multicultural event coming up, and look forward to partnering together in many future endeavors. And with that, I want to thank you for your time and service in our community, and look forward to our relationships that we're going to build together. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Director.
Yes, thank you. I was going to talk to you about special games today, but since we have the events team here, I'd actually like to just invite them back up to the podium, because they're the experts on this event, and I believe we have a slide for this. There we go.
Okay. Hello again, council. So, special games will be taking place next Saturday, March 5th, at Great Oak High School Football Stadium from 9:00 to 11:00 AM. The last time we were able to host this event was in 2019, so the events team and the community is very excited to be able to host this event once again. At this time, we have approximately 90 athletes signed up to participate in this free event. The event is designed for individuals of all ages with any developmental disabilities to participate, and as they participate in the event, they are paired up with a high school volunteer to act as their buddy and participate alongside them with the games. We also accept adult volunteers, which I know I have a couple adult volunteers sitting right behind me who are signed up. So we have, at this time, over 100 volunteers, and anyone who's interested in participating, we still have the application available for athletes and volunteers on our website, which is temeculaca.gov/specialgames. The application will be open until Monday, the 28th. And I did want to announce that we have several sponsors who will be having promotional booths at the event, which we're very excited, because that just adds an extra element to the event. To name them, we have the Comprehensive Autism Center, Disability Sports Foundation, JDB Training Speech and Language Development Center, Temecula Clinica Medica Familiar, and Temecula Valley Therapy Services. So once again, just want to mark your calendars for this great event. I know I'm super excited to be able to have this event again. It was so disappointing in 2020. We were getting ready to plan it, and obviously had to cancel it, but we're making sure everything is safe and friendly and welcoming for all of our participants once again. And then, Willa, did want to share one note about our proposed Culture Fest event.
Yeah, for the Temecula Culture Fest, I did want to mention, if you are looking to be a vendor, or have a booth, or be a part of our event, we do have application up on our website, starting this evening, as soon as council concludes, and it's temeculaca.gov/festvendor. And then you can apply, and it'll come right to me, and I'll preview. And that concludes that report.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it for you, too?
Yes, indeed. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
All right, so do we have any director's reports? Negative. General manager's report?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
All right, so I will adjourn this meeting until March 8th.
Okay, and I'm going to go ahead and call to order the meeting for the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency. Please note that all members are still here. Do we have any public comments?
We do not.
All right, moving on, we have one item on the consent calendar. Approve action minutes of February 8, 2022.
Move approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your vote. And that passes 5 to 0. Do we have an executive director's report this evening?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chair.
Any board members? All right, go ahead and close that meeting, and let's go ahead and open up the meeting for the Temecula Public Financing Authority. Again, we are still all in the room. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
All right, not seeing any others. Let's go ahead and move on to item number 16, approve action minutes of February 8, 2022.
Move approval.
All right, please cast your votes. Oh, and that also passes 5 to 0. Do we have a executive director report this evening?
Nothing further tonight.
Nothing further. Any board members? Really? Wow. You know, one day, we're going to have a board member who's like, "I've got a report." So I'm looking forward to that. Just keep me on my toes. All right, so let's go ahead and close that meeting and reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. We're going to go ahead and start the public hearing. Item number 17 is approve Second Amendment to the Disposition and Development Agreement for Vine Creek Apartments Affordable Housing Development between the city of Temecula as housing successor to the former Temecula Redevelopment Agency and Temecula Pacific Associates. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you tonight is the Second Amendment to the Disposition and Development Agreement for the Vine Creek Affordable Housing Apartment Development. Just really quickly, I'm going to reacquaint you with the project. It's been a number of years since this project was approved, so I'll do a little of that, and then we'll get into the content of the Second Amendment to the DDA and the request for additional funds. So just to reorient you to the project site location, you can see there on the aerial, it's at the corner essentially of Pujol and Main Street, across the creek from the Children's Museum. These are the renderings that were done at the time of the project approval. As you can see, it's a high-quality development, three stories. These are a number of other different angles on the property. You can see the tot lot, the swimming pool, the community center portion of it, and the project will have direct access to the upcoming and hopefully open soon Marietta Creek Walk. So the project, like I said, is a previously approved project. It's intended to be a 60-unit development. Of course, it is affordable housing, a affordable housing development with a schedule to have 18 units set aside for extremely low, 12 for very low, and 29 for low. That adds up to 59. There will be one unit, that is the manager's unit. Very important to recognize the fact that this project will have 12 units that will be set aside for families or individuals with special needs, and that is the first of its kind for a city-funded affordable housing development within the city. So a little background on the DDA. The DDA was actually adopted back in 2019, between the city of Temecula and Temecula Pacific Associates. At that time, the DDA provided for $2.7 million in affordable housing funding. That included direct financial support, as well as a piece of property that was, that is owned by the city as the former housing successor. That would be a land donation, so a portion of the site, as it is today, is two parcels. One of them is owned by the city. In 2020, the developer requested an extension and amendment, the First Amendment to the Disposition and Development Agreement, to provide for more opportunity to apply for tax credits. The tax credits are a competitive environment. There are many projects vying for very few funds, and so they came in and requested that they could get a few extensions, and the city council granted that. Unfortunately, after five tax credit applications that they have gone after, they have not been successful, and that is not due to any fault of their own. That is due to, just like I said, the competitive nature of the tax credit award market. Other projects either had more funding from local agencies, or had other aspects of their project that allowed them to score higher in the application process. So because of that, the developer had come back to the city and said, you know, "We need to make this project more competitive in that tax credit application process," and requested additional funds. As it sits today, and it's what's before you tonight in the Second Amendment to the DDA, the developer's asking for an additional $4 million in affordable housing funds, to total 6.7 in the newest DDA. So that would be 2.7 originally, and plus four tonight. So we have a great relationship with the developer. We've worked with them for a long time, trying to get this project not only approved, but constructed, but we did not, of course, take their word for it, that this would make, four more million dollars would make their project more competitive. So we hired Kaiser Marston Associates, our financial and real estate consulting firm, to take a look at whether or not adding $4 million in city funds to this project would make it not only competitive, but likely to win in the next, in upcoming rounds. So the result of KMA's analysis, which is essentially what they do, is they basically put the project and its specifics through the application process on their own to see what kind of score they will get on the other side. And that analysis revealed that with an additional $4 million, the project's score, which is a tax credit equity score, would go from 48.1% today to 67.8% after the addition of the funding. So in the last two tax credit rounds, projects with between 60 and 70% scores were awarded tax credits. And the tax credits are critical. They're the last piece of financing required to be fully funded, to make this project go. So there's county funds, there's city funds, there's private equity, and there's also conventional bank financing. So again, the $4 million was deemed to significantly increase the likelihood the project would win in the upcoming tax credit rounds. So what's the funding source? This would be the first project to not receive just strictly affordable housing funds. I recall the council back in October developed the new program that the city is working on to COVID relief program, is intended to fund many things, one of them being affordable housing with general fund dollars, and that is in... And that is proposed to be the funding source per the city council's direction at that time through the pandemic community reinvestment program. So I would like to just make the note as we work on this project and other projects moving forward to revisit the regional housing needs, that the city has a requirement to try to go and get units built to satisfy. And this project certainly would help the city satisfy a portion of that need, particularly in those extremely low and low income categories, which are very difficult for the city to actually achieve. So in conclusion, staff is recommending that the council approve the Second Amendment to the Disposition and Development Agreement between the City of Temecula and Temecula Pacific Associates. That concludes my presentation. Available for questions, we also have the developer here, Darren Burbien, if you would like to speak with him. Thank you.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead and start with the council questions first. Mr. Stewart?
So do we have a total cost of the project? I mean, just from my standpoint, I'd like to know what percentage we're kicking into this project.
Darren, do you have the latest figures on that?
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all again. The total project cost is $29,349,129.
Could you also explain the tax credit part of it?
Yes, absolutely. It is brain damage. I totally understand. So the tax credits is where we really ultimately go for our funding. We apply to the state for state and federal tax credits. The tax credits are awarded to the project. So like in this case, let's say the tax credits are roughly going about 17 million in tax credits. We get those tax credits. Once we get them, we sell it to larger investors like, for example, Verizon. They'll buy those tax credits, 88 cents on the dollar. That turns into the equity along with the other sources, city contribution, county contribution, and then we have a traditional permanent mortgage.
Now, okay, now it also, these projects have a term in which they have to remain low-cost housing. Could you explain that a little bit, too?
Yes, so we also have a regulatory agreement. They have to remain, the properties in the project will have to remain affordable for 55 years.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make that clear.
All right, any other questions? Ms. Alexander?
Quick question. What happens if, for some reason, and we are hoping not, that the project isn't able to go through and they don't get it? What happens with that $4 million at that point?
Well, the $4 million is added to the 2.7 million, which the city is a total city's contribution. Our funding doesn't go in until the project is nearing completion. So the project would almost already be done before the city would actually be out of funds.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you. Well, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have any public comments this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we only have one public comment and it's Ms. Miller.
All right, good evening, Ms. Miller. And you have five minutes.
Well, then I'll take some time. Okay, this mantra about no housing. I mean, we have empty box buildings, empty store buildings, empty Walmarts, empty industrial buildings right here over in Temecula that make lovely apartments. And I don't think you should be building from the ground up at all. Neither should you be having people coming in to get these apartments from other places. They lived other places. They shouldn't come in here. You have enough homeless people here and you need to house them. So we're not even talking homeless here. This is low cost. And the rumor on the ground is it's low cost for one year. And then they raise the price and people have to move. And then they have the ones who have to work and then they have to have the cars and they have to leave. So what are we accomplishing here? Another apartment building on Pujol Street? Have you been over there lately? There's nothing left, nothing, you know? And I know you built something under or over, so the mountain lions are using it. But that's, that's good that you recorded them, but it's not forever. You've got the Altar project? You let that go for three years and then you brought it back up there? Really? Really? It was gone. It was a blessing. Everyone I talked to downtown, they go, they're not putting anything on that beautiful bank of hillsides. I said, oh, yes, they are. They changed their minds. And so if it has 60 apartments, the Transportation Board says you go times 10 because you left for the morning to deliver the children. You came and picked them up. You took them to the grocery store with you. You know, it adds up, the deliveries to that. And this outrageous closing of stores and open distribution centers, Amazon, that just puts more deliveries. So 60 is 600 truck and car trips per day. Altar could average 15,000 more a day. Why are you putting anything? You need to close both of these projects. The Marietta Creek will be further impacted by toxic runoff. I mean, it's right next to the acreage. It's just going to roll straight over the side. And it's full of oil tars because you haven't started the program where people who don't work here will get an electric car until they find a job closer to their home, no matter what their attitude is, which is, but I have friends in Orange County. I don't care what friends you have. You're not going to have them long if they continue to breathe this air. Anyway, so it's so crowded on Pujol. How will the first responders ever get through there? And those dips, it's enough to take your car out. They call the gutters, whatever. It's just terrible. So it just bounces them in those ambulances and you have a sick person in there bouncing on Pujol Street? Really? And when I started to speak against this today, I of course went to the library and my papers are missing. And I don't know what happened there. I mean, that same parking lot? Oh, my MacBook was missing. We're talking crime here. So I've traced that. The homeless challenged, no, the challenged individuals sold it to a truck driver because he called me. So crime going up, you have 60 more apartments that, you know, somebody's going to have to pay a small amount for. And if they can't, then, you know, honest people do what they have to do after a while. And 20% of these apartments will be for families of challenged adults with, you know, abilities. We don't say disabled anymore. We changed that. So 20%, that's the new catch-all phrase. Well, I think you should take Sumner's bin. It has a fence around it. If we have runners, then they can run all around and every family knows them and they'll take care of them and they'll send you back to that. So I think that's where you need to put that and build no more of those Sumner bins out there. Those were beautiful CO2 greenhouse gas absorbing fields. You know, if the times get such that we're going to have to raise food, you could have raised food all around that area. And, you know, another thing in agriculture that's come up is wood. Where are you going to get the wood for your apartments?
Ms. Miller, your time is up.
Did it get up? Okay, you're done. I don't care how much money you're making off of this project. You need to stop it now and stop this project and remodel what you have in this town.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes any public comments we have on this item. You're welcome to close the public hearing.
All right, let's go ahead and close the public hearing. And do we have any comments from council?
Move approval.
All right, we have a second and motion. Let's go ahead and vote then. All right, and that passes five to zero. I just want to say, thank you for coming. Thank you for going through extended process with us at the city. You were one of the first applicants when we did the RFP many years ago on the affordable housing and city properties. And you are the last project standing when it comes to that. And you've demonstrated tremendous success and a great dedication to our community and I think a real quality product and especially the unique features, the special needs communities and so forth that you're providing. You know, I know that was important to a former council member, Nigar, in that development. And I'm glad to see that this project is hopefully moving forward and hopefully successfully getting through the crazy tax credit process this year. So good luck with that and I hope to see you here back with good news soon. All right, so moving on, we are looking at item number 18. Adopted interim urgency ordinance of the City Council. The City of Temecula enacted pursuant to Government Code Section 65858, establishing emergency regulations related to urban lot splits and housing units built in accordance with Senate Bill 9 declaring urgency thereof and making a determination of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA Guidelines, Section 15061B3 and Government Code Section 65852.21J. Mr. Peters, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. This is the SB 9 Urgency Ordinance. So this presentation is broken down into three sections. The first section will answer what is SB 9. Second section will go over the city's authorization for an urgency ordinance. And then finally, we'll describe what the emergency regulations are that are being proposed by staff. So what is SB 9? It's a Senate bill referred to as the Home Act. It's the Housing Opportunity and More Efficiency Act. And this law was adopted January 1, 2022. And it allows urban lot splits and two-unit projects by right in single-family residential zones. Local agencies must ministerially approve both. That includes the lot split and the two units on each in single-family zones. No hearings, no public input, and no CEQA are required for these projects. And there's no discretion for the city to deny if a project meets all SB 9 requirements. In addition, the new lot resulting from the urban lot split can be sold separately. So what does that look like? We've prepared an illustration. You can see the air photo. See the single-family residents in the driveway going to the street. And we'll just say that this is a one-acre lot. SB 9 would allow the urban lot splits, so the red dashed line would be the creation of the second lot. And then SB 9 would allow for the building of an accessory dwelling unit in addition to the primary residence on the first lot. And then on the second lot, that would be able to accommodate a duplex for a total of four lots resulting from this law. So the max number of units is capped at four. And as I described, you could have a primary structure and an ADU on one lot. That's an accessory dwelling unit. And then a duplex on the other or any combination thereof. But you cannot have a duplex and then add an ADU to go over the cap of four. The city cannot impose standards that would prohibit construction of up to two units at least 800 square feet each. So we have to accommodate at least 800 square feet for the units. As far as the location throughout the city, the parcel lot or development must be located in a single-family residential zone. However, it cannot be located in a special flood hazard area, a high-fire severity zone, earthquake fault zone on a historic property or in a historic district. The parcel must be a minimum of 2,400 square feet in size. And just for reference, the cottages in Harveston, so those homes that ring the lake, those lots are a minimum of 3,000 square feet, 3,000 square feet in size. So each new lot is at least 1,200 square feet. The agency can set lower. We're not proposing to do that. Then the split must result in two new lots of approximately equal size or a max of 60-40 split at the most. So if you had a 5,000-square-foot lot, you could split it in half, the two new lots, but the max split could be 3,000 on the high end, 2,000 on the low end. As for existing unit protection, the lot split cannot require the demo or alteration of an affordable housing unit. And the housing development project cannot result in the demo of more than 25% of the exterior walls of an existing residence unless the project meets one of the following. If local ordinance allows it, again, we're not proposing that. And if the unit or residence has not been occupied by a tenant in the last three years. Additional standards identified in the law. So under SB 9, local agencies may only impose objective design standards and staff prepared those with our consultant. They were approved by the Planning Commission December 1, 2021, and then the City Council approved January 25, 2022. So those are objective design standards for duplexes and duplexes, triplexes, multifamily City may require only one off-street parking space per unit and none if the project is within one half-mile to a high-quality transit stop or a car-share vehicle location within one block of the project. Setbacks are limited to four feet on side and rear yards, but none at all on an existing structure or one constructed in the same location. And additional standards, there are no right-of-way dedications or construction of off-site improvements may be required by the city. No corrections of non-conforming uses or structures are allowed. So if someone built within the right-of-way or within a setback, the city would have no ability to correct that. The owner must sign an affidavit that they will occupy one of the units as their principal residence for three years. Local agencies must report SB 9 lot splits in our annual housing element report. And then no short-term rentals are allowed as a result of an SB 9 development. So nothing less than 30 days. One consideration with regard to SB 9, it doesn't contain any language related to superseding or limiting the scope of CCNRs. So HOAs may enforce CCNRs to prohibit or regulate duplexes and urban lot splits. So what's the city's authorization for the urgency ordinance? State law allows a city to adopt an interim ordinance that imposes temporary restrictions on the approval of land use entitlements that may be in conflict with the general plan or zoning and need to be studied. That's certainly the case here. A lot of the city has owned single-family and was not anticipated in our general plan or the EIR. So for the urgency ordinance to take effect, it must be adopted by not less than a four-fifth vote. It would go into effect immediately for 45 days and it would expire on April 8. And then at least 10 days prior to the expiration of the interim ordinance, the City Council shall issue a written report explaining what has been done to alleviate the condition or at least what's being studied to address SB 9. And staff would propose to bring that back March 8 to the City Council. And then if necessary, the City Council may extend for an additional 10 months and 15 days, giving staff a year to adopt a final ordinance addressing SB 9. And if that's required, that would occur on March 22. And then if necessary, an urgency ordinance can be extended for an additional year, so giving staff two years. So why the urgency? It's to protect the health, safety, welfare, and quality of life for Temecula's residents. And in addition, staff needs time to study and analyze impacts on sewer, water, trash service, electricity, traffic, infrastructure, schools, police, and fire staffing, et cetera. So we need time to develop the final regulations. So what is being proposed? So what we've done is we've looked at other cities. We've worked with our city attorney and we've reviewed studies, reports, urgency ordinances from the following cities, Arcadia, Coronado, Pasadena, Garden Grove, Aruba Valley. And basically, we're taking best practices from all of those ordinances. So first, what's being proposed is that no unit created pursuant to SB 9 shall exceed 16 feet and one-story in height. That's consistent with our ADU ordinance or accessory dwelling ordinance. And with four-foot setbacks, we wanted to limit the height and the impact on neighbors. The second is no unit shall be more than 1,200 square feet in floor area. We must allow per SB 9 at least 800 square feet. And we had considered capping it at that, but then... that, but then people would come in and they'd call it an ADU, which allows them to go up to 1,200 square feet anyway. So, we're proposing it at 1,200 square feet in the urgency ordinance. And then in addition, we're proposing that new lot lines must be straight from the front property line to the rear property line with no curves or angles. That's an objective design standard to promote orderly development, and it's in subdivision ordinances and design standards. It's also in our subdivision ordinance, requires a perpendicular line, perpendicular to the street with a max of five-degree angle variation in any lot line. In addition, we're proposing an affordability covenant, so for new development resulting from an urban lot split, one of the two parcels created shall include a deed restriction for one income-restricted dwelling unit for a very low, low, or moderate-income household. So, that translates to one of the four units would be subject to the deed restriction. So, if someone took advantage of the SB 9 urban lot split, and the primary residence on one lot, they could build a dwelling unit on the other, as soon as they went to the second on that other lot, that's when the affordable covenant would kick in. That would help the city meet its re-allocation of 4,193 units, and in addition, the limited size of the units is more conducive to affordability. And then finally, this is an additional objective standard, which was not in the ordinance in the staff report packet, and we're proposing this to be included with the ordinance. So, I'll read it into the record. For an urban lot split that results in only one new unit being developed on the lot, the new development shall match the existing primary dwelling unit's roof pitch, roof tiles, materials and colors, siding, stucco finish and color, base materials, window sizes and shapes, and trim material and color. So, our objective design standards cover duplexes and up, but if there's an urban lot split and only one unit gets developed, this would help cover that and make sure that that other unit would match the primary residence. As for staff's recommendation, the urgency ordinance is exempt from sequa, and the interim ordinance will provide temporary regulations related to SB 9 development projects in order to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And then finally, staff recommends the City Council adopt an interim urgency ordinance for SB 9 urban lot splits. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Oh, I'm sure we have a couple. Let's see, let's start out on this end, Ms. Edwards.
So, Matt, let me just, I'm gonna say sentences, I'm gonna say these things in a little bit different way than you did, and you can confirm or deny, okay? Because I want to make sure that we're clear on this. So, let's just take, you know, a really nice home in Temecula that's in a development, you know, a tract home, and they have a fairly large backyard, right? And this is telling these people that they can divide their property into up to three more parcels? Two more parcels?
One additional parcel resulting in two, so one split.
Okay, so one additional parcel. That means that they can get a lot split, and the back half of their property will now have another house on it.
It could have two.
Or two houses on it.
Two.
And we have no say about that, right?
That's correct.
But I did hear you say, and thank goodness for this, is that HOAs have some opportunity to enforce their CCNRs.
At this time?
Right now.
This time.
But we've seen this before, and what happens is eventually the state takes away the HOAs' authority to enforce anything, so even the beautiful developments that we have that have nice HOAs will not be able to say that they cannot divide a parcel. And now, these parcels are divided and sold. It's a totally separate parcel. Now, my backyard's a totally separate parcel. It takes no, they don't take into account, really, the size of the property. They don't take into account how the people who live in that house are gonna get their cars from that house to the street, because it doesn't require any right-of-way.
It requires 20 feet minimum.
Okay, 20 feet minimum, okay, but it doesn't really say how or where that is, because the, we, some of the potential lines that we saw today, the divisions of the parcels were crazy. In fact, one of them actually cut a garage in half to allow the back parcel to use that part of the garage. So, that house was actually divided, and a piece of that house was divided and assigned to the new parcel. So, the other thing that's interesting is that people, when we say there are no sequa requirements, when developments are proposed, the city and the state and other agencies require that studies be done, environmental studies be done, to see what the impacts are going to be, you know, if there are any endangered species, and also, or anything, they just have to do an environmental study. And that also deals with air quality and water. So, they have to go to the water district and get approval, under normal situations, to build that, the homes, right?
Correct.
And every home, the water district has to say, yes, we can furnish water to these homes. But in this case, that is not the case. There's no environmental study, there's no, nothing that tells us how they're gonna deal, or how the city is gonna be left to deal with traffic impacts of all these new parcels and new homes that are over and above what the city has meticulously planned for in our general plan, and there's no accounting approval from the water district, and there's no air quality studies done, and the city has no authority to demand those things be done like we normally would.
That's correct. No sequa can be applied to these projects. And typically, if we get a specific plan or a project with more than 500 units, a water supply assessment is required.
Right, but no more. Also, the City of Temecula requires developers to put in infrastructure first, because Temecula residents should not be burdened by the numbers of new residents coming into the community. So, they have to build, for example, the fire station that was out by Summers Bend. They have to provide that, they have to provide parks, they have to provide street widening, and not just within the development. They have to provide signals on our main thoroughfares that are gonna be impacted by the size of that development. That's not the case with this. So, let's just say that in your neighborhood, every parcel could be divided and have two, into, you know, two parcels now, and have two additional units.
Right.
And no accounting for traffic, no accounting for, you know, we need more street capacity, none of that. So, this is the perfect example of why local control is important, when the state of California is gonna come in and tell us that our numbers in Temecula could double.
Since this law passed, we've been trying to predict and analyze how many new units is this gonna translate into. SCAG, the Southern California Association of Governments, put out a report, and this report identifies that the city could potentially accommodate, this is based on their report, 3,700 new units as a result of SB 9.
So, 3,700 new units, you know, based on parcels that are, you know, like my backyard, like your neighbor's backyard, that have now been divided and sold with new dwelling units on them, and we have no say about it. So, this is considered an emergency.
Yeah.
And hence, the ordinance. I just wanted to make sure that people get, I mean, the true picture of how horrific this is, and the state of California is taking local control away from local governments who are already planned. I mean, we know exactly how big Temecula's gonna be, and where all the new homes are gonna go, and what they're gonna look like, but that will no longer be the case. So, yeah, I consider that an emergency. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, you said something about not to exceed 16 feet. What exactly was that about?
Oh, height.
That's in height.
In height? Oh, got it. And then, if, you said about low-cost housing, but if there was only three units, so if they had their house, and then they built a duplex on their back lot, low-cost housing would not apply. It's only if there's four total units, correct?
Soon as they get to the fourth.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
That was, and of course, we all know everybody's neighborhood, we got plenty of parking. So, the streets are like empty in the City of Temecula, so to double the amount of cars on our streets, no problem there.
Or more, or more than that.
Yeah, right, okay.
Well, obviously, all of us are on the same boat with this, and I agree with Mary Ann that this is an emergency, in a sense, but my biggest thing, too, is just looking at the health, safety, and welfare. We nailed it. You know, looking at trash, looking at the sewers, those are big concerns of mine. So, I just want to say thank you to the staff for doing what you guys are doing right now, and digging in to be able to give us some type of local control to slowing down what we need to be able to reevaluate the situation here in the next couple days, or well, next couple months. So, I just appreciate Erin and the city attorney and everybody for doing that. And if we want to change this, we know we need to change this at a higher level as well. So, I hope we can all, as a community, dig in together and do that. So, thank you.
Zach?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Matt, thank you for that presentation, and we all had either a one-on-one or a two-on-one on this, and really had an opportunity to discuss it. While I can certainly appreciate the spirit of SB 9, it has real-world impacts in our community, and that's the part that I struggle with, and the language in SB 9 allows us to do this emergency ordinance, is that correct?
It's under the Government Code 65858. That allows us to do the urgency ordinance?
Yeah, and I think that's important, right? Because if we're peer as council members, we're thinking of the long game with the city, we're thinking of long-term planning, and I think it's really important that we get this right, we can take the time to study it, and take that pause and get it right, that's what we should be doing, so full support of the pause.
Great. I have a couple quick questions. Enforcement and tracking, so there were two items among the many that I think stuck out for me. Affidavit to Occupy, that's owner occupied for three years if they're going to do this. And then the other one was the deed restriction that gets put into place for, you know, affordable housing if they build the four units, right? How do we, how do we track and enforce that? I mean, so if somebody goes ahead, they do this, worst-case scenario, you know, they live there for six months, sell the property, I mean, what is our recourse?
So, we'll have to, and we've done this, we've created an SB 9 application with submittal requirements. The affidavit is one of the requirements that's submittal. So, we would put that on record, and then in terms of enforcement, maybe Luke, you can help me out with enforcement.
Yeah, this one is my favorite provision in the entire law, but, so, we require an affidavit that says what the law requires them to say, which is they intend to live there, not even that they will live there. So, that's as far as we can go with that. Now, whether or not they do that, we can't force them to stay there. And frankly, it's, in my opinion, disingenuous at best as a provision of the law, because once the units are built, the city is never going to, what, go tear down the units if they don't live up to that provision, it's not gonna happen. So, once the units are built, they're built. And the way the law is written, it says that they only have to say they intend to live there, so, like I said, it's just my opinion, but it sounds to me like they, it was never intended to be a serious enforced provision of the law.
And as far as the deed restrictions go as well?
Yeah, the deed restriction, so that will go on title, so that's a matter of title, and the city will be responsible for monitoring that, just like we're responsible for monitoring all of the other affordable restrictions on affordable housing in the city.
We'll also have to keep track of the urban lot splits, so that if it happens this year, five years from now, the new owner doesn't come in and try to do another urban lot split. That's restricted, that can't happen.
It's exciting. So, okay, well, I guess, it's just so frustrating to live in California sometimes. Okay, so, let's see, do we have any public comment on this?
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any public comments on this. The city attorney will need to read the title of the interim urgency ordinance.
This is an interim urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temecula, enacted pursuant to Government Code Section 65858, establishing emergency regulations related to urban lot splits and housing units built in accordance with Senate Bill 9, declaring the urgency thereof, and making a determination of exemption under California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, Section 15061B3, and Government Code Section 65852.21J.
I'll move the item.
All right.
And just a clarification, the motion would be with the amendment proposed by staff?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. All right, we have a motion in a second, please cast your votes. Okay, and that passes 5 to 0. Thank you. All right, well, let's go on to, what, oh, the joint meeting, City Council, Community Services District, and item number 19, approved fiscal year 2021/22 mid-year budget adjustments. Ms. Hennessy, good evening.
Good evening. One sec here, is it playing? All righty. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. As reported in October of last year, after closing the books, the city's major funds all reported significant budget surpluses due to a better-than-expected revenue received in fiscal year 2021. The general fund had projected a growth rate of 2.8% and realized a 12.3% growth rate instead. The Measure S fund had projected a 2% loss in revenue, but realized an 18.3% growth rate. In addition, expenditures came in below budget, creating an even higher year-end fund balance. This mid-year budget reflects the recommended appropriation of these surplus funds. The mid-year requests include a balance of operating capital and workforce-related requests, all of which fit with an available revenue projected for the fiscal year. To address the increased workload brought about by the return to full operating capacity following the pandemic, combined with the largest operating and capital budgets in the city's history, a request for 10 new full-time authorized positions and 12 part-time project positions are being requested. The detailed positions will be provided in the slides to follow. Additionally, the salary adjustment authorized by council in December has been reflected in the mid-year budget request. To support law enforcement efforts, five new dedicated deputy positions are requested, three requested this fiscal year, and another two next fiscal year. These deputy positions include the civic center deputy, as well as the backfill for the metro team positions that were diverted from other assignments last year. With the one-time surplus funds primarily in Measure S, a request for five new capital projects and additional funding for seven existing projects are also included in the mid-year budget. The details of the 10 full-time, 10 new full-time authorized positions are noted here, with six positions within the Community Development Department, and with the city's $700 million capital improvement program, an additional two positions within the Public Works Department are requested to keep the projects moving forward. A limited-term position is requested in the Human Resources and Risk Management Department to support and backfill resources that were diverted to support the city's COVID response, and 13 positions within the Temecula Community Services District, one of which is a full-time authorized conversion of a project position, and 12 project positions will be utilized to support Day Camp and the new Summers Bend Sports Ranch Park that was just recently opened. This chart illustrates the city's authorized positions since 1995. If approved, the requested position count would become 190.95 full-time equivalent positions, which is still nearly 20 positions below the city's peak headcount in fiscal year 2007-08. The general fund budget, which is shown here on the chart as the green line, has increased by 46% since '07-'08, and that excludes the addition of Measure S and the capital budget. Funding for these new positions comes primarily from strong, ongoing tax base supported by the general fund and TCSD, as opposed to the prior year-end surplus. With the significant year-end surplus funds in Measure S and Measure A... With the significant year-end surplus funds in Measure S and Measure A, a total of five new capital projects are being requested, as well as additional funding for seven existing projects. Surplus funds are considered to be one-time in nature, and the appropriation for capital projects is fiscally prudent and in line with budget policies stated use for these funds. Appropriations for these projects are subject to the Planning Commission's findings that the projects are consistent with the city's general plan, which is scheduled for their March 16th meeting. I'll turn it over to Public Works Director Pat Thomas now, who will provide a brief description of the projects.
Thank you, Jennifer. So the five new projects that are proposed to be included in the capital improvement program, or CIP, are shown on the screen before you. The first project, known as the fiber optic communication system, is to prepare a master plan for fiber optic communications, which will connect all of our traffic signals throughout the city, as well as city facilities, and provide for the communications needs of those infrastructure and city facilities. Funding for the Myrieta Creek Regional Park, this is the plan to construct a regional sports park on the Detention Basin property along Jefferson Avenue north of Winchester Road. The funding being added to the, to the program is to basically begin the planning for the construction of that park on that Detention Basin property. There will need to be additional funding identified to actually construct those improvements. Two projects from a recreational standpoint, the Ronald Reagan Sports Park Hockey Rink is to improve the existing hockey rink with the idea of a covered rink with new surfacing and boards around the facility. And this, again, is to begin the, the planning process of construction of that project. The Ronald Reagan Sports Park Skate Park funding is to replace and renovate the existing skate park. And as Councilmember Stewart mentioned earlier, this is, the plan is to remove and reconstruct the existing skate park, and we will be reaching out to the community to get input on that project, as well as discussing potentially some interim options for skating facilities. And lastly, the Ronald Reagan Sports Park Pump Track Shade Structure is to add a shade structure to the existing pump track at the launch area. So the projects that will be recommended for supplemental or additional funding include the Diaz Road Expansion Project, and this is to provide the full funding for the plan to expand Diaz Road from Rancho California Road to the northern city limits. And this is amount is to fully fund that project to, to begin construction later this year. The Myrieta Creek Bridge Project, recommendation is to add a million dollars of funding to continue with the design process, and this is the Myrieta Creek Bridge at Overland Drive. The city's been working on plans for that project for some time now. We're in the, what's known as the Highway Bridge Program for federal funding for construction. We haven't received that official programming of that funding yet, but this amount is to continue with the design, and we actually anticipate that we would be reimbursed for this amount from that Highway Bridge Program when that money does become available. The city facility rehabilitation project is to, is to complete significant roof repairs at Fire Station Number 92. Citywide Surveillance Cameras is to add and extend our surveillance camera program to the Harvest Inn Community Park. The Great Oak Trail Lighting, this is the project to add lighting to the Great Oak, or also known as Wolf Creek Trail, which runs along Pachanga Parkway. Infill Mini Pump Track is to add the funding to fully fund the, the projects that we've been working on to construct two new infill mini pump tracks, one at the Long Canyon Creek Park, and then another one at the Wolf Creek Park. And lastly, the Sports Field LED lighting funding is to be able to renovate the lighting at the North-South Fields at Ronald Reagan Sports Park with LED new technology lighting. So that concludes the, the list of projects that we're proposing for additional funding. And so I will turn it back over to Ms. Hennessy.
Thanks, Pat. So the major requests within the general fund include nearly $8.6 million in additional revenue, primarily due to increased sales tax, development activity, transient occupancy tax, property tax, and a new revenue source collected from developments that have implemented a Community Facilities District for public services. Operating expenditures are requested to increase just under 1.5 million, mainly to support the salary adjustments previously approved by the council in December, as well as the additional authorized positions. The general fund remains structurally balanced over the five-year projection, with revenues exceeding expenditures in each year. This chart excludes the one-time infusion of funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA. Its interesting observation on this chart shows that the general fund revenue has rebounded from the pandemic and is back on its original trajectory. The actual loss in revenue from the pandemic was 3.5%, which occurred in fiscal year 1920, as you can see by the, by the dip in the black line, compared to the 9.2% reduction that was originally projected. The major departmental operating requests are noted here with the personnel requests mentioned previously. The non-personnel requests include a reduction of $300,000 in the city attorney's budget to reflect the trend in legal services midway through the year. Finance is requesting two project employees to help backfill some of our vacant positions. HR or Human Resources is requesting funding to cover the cost of the office relocation and remodel between HR and the city attorney's office, which are being offset by a reduction in other expenses. Park Maintenance is requesting $66,000 for emergency slope maintenance, and Fire is requesting $25,000 for fire design contract services. The general fund ending balance is projected to be just shy of $50 million, with a total of $21 million in reserves. Over the next five years, it's anticipated that reserves will remain fully funded with a healthy available fund balance each year due to the improved revenue forecast. Measure S fund includes an increase of $5.5 million in revenue to reflect an 8% growth rate over the prior year. And expenditure adjustments include $4.5 million for the new CIP projects and 1.9 million in additional funding for existing CIP projects mentioned earlier. With the appropriation of these one-time funds into CIP projects, the proportionate share of Measure S now dedicated to capital projects will increase to 53% for the current fiscal year. Measure S's ending fund balance is projected to be just over 9.7 million. And as the pandemic wanes, TCSD's programs, events, and classes are returning to pre-COVID levels. Revenue is projected to increase by $609,000 to reflect the return of contract classes, theater productions, and sport tournaments. Expenditures include the request of just under $1 million for personal-related costs mentioned earlier, as well as for contract classes and special events. The Workforce Development Program has been shifted from the city manager's office to TCSD, so the mid-year request also includes the transfer of this budget. And finally, a request of $100,000 in capital outlay is included for the replacement of the snack bar appliances at the Pat Berzold Sports Park. TCSD's ending project, ending fund balance is projected to be just over $455,000. And that concludes our presentation this evening, and we're available for any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any questions? Nothing. All right. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have public comments. I have roughly eight public comments in person, and then another seven via email. So we have Adam Light, followed by Alex Sisneros.
Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council members and staff. My name is Adam Light, and I'm here with Neighborhood Drop-In. I was born and raised in Temecula, and this is where I now choose to raise my children. I'm here tonight to show support for the city's interest in investing valuable resources into the action sports community. Action sports facilities like the Temecula Skate Park are very important to our riders. Though there may be concerns with the budget, design, and rider displacement during construction, I believe this is a great opportunity for our community. TSP and the hockey rink have been staples of the Ronald Reagan Sports Park for decades, and they could definitely use some TLC. There is a huge action sports community in Temecula, young and old, and it's growing. Those that have emailed in and are here tonight only represent a fraction of our community. Along with investing in the future of TSP, we should also be looking at building more safe, easily accessible action sports facilities. When the community and the city work together, great things happen. I'm excited to see what the future holds for action sports in the city of Temecula. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good to see you.
The next speaker is Alex.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just couldn't look up. Sorry.
Hi, my, hi, my name is Natalie Light, and I'm a member of Neighborhood Drop-In. I ride at the skate park every weekend. I think it's a good idea to fix the old skate park, but I am worried about where to ride while it's under construction. It would be nice to have another park to go to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Alex Sisneros, to be followed by Joseph Komlosky.
Alex, good evening.
Hey, good evening. My name is Alex, and I'm here with Neighborhood Drop-In. I'm here today to voice my support for the approval of the budget for renovating the hockey rink and the Temecula Skate Park. It's an exciting time for action sports here in Temecula, with the addition of the new, smaller pump track at Long Canyon Creek and the construction of another one soon underway. It's encouraging to see the city continuously support these athletes and actively promote these sports. As advocates for action sports, we are constantly engaged with a diverse community of skaters, bikers, riders, and rollers, many of which are here tonight. Of the many differences between these athletes we have encountered through the sports and cultures, two things have remained undoubtedly consistent: the passion they have for their sports and these types of recreational facilities. To us, these places are much more than just an amenity in our parks. They are places that curate a culture of creativity and acceptance, a place that promotes independence and perseverance. For some, these places offer sanctuary, a place where they can escape the pressures of school, work, and/or home life. While I do believe that renovating the current skate park is a step towards addressing the urgent needs of a properly designed and well-built skate park, my concern is how this will affect those that currently frequent the skate park. Although we are excited for the potential changes, I would hate to see anyone displaced or discouraged from continuing to engage in their sport of choice. While I don't doubt that this will also be an inconvenience for the roller and hockey leagues, Temecula does offer an alternative location on Margarita Road for these sports. If the budget is approved, I would request that the city consider creating safer sanctioned places to ride while a major remodel and renovations are underway. This could be a development of a secondary skate park, or a smaller skate spot, or a temporary facility where we can continue to engage in our sports. Lastly, I would also ask that the city reconsider the rules and regulations that prohibit these sports from many of our major, many of our city's parks. This would also offer the community alternative locations to ride until the renovations are complete. And with that, I'd like to thank the City Council and Community Services Department for recognizing the necessity for the proper skate parks, and appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
The next speaker is Joseph. After Joseph is Tom Belik.
Good evening.
Good evening. Joseph Komrosky, a fellow board member for Neighborhood Drop-In. Thank you, members of City Council, for your time and patience in serving our wonderful city of Temecula. Many familiar faces, Kathy, Erica, Patrick, Stu, Zach, Jessica, Erin, Kevin, and many that I haven't mentioned, but I've talked with you previously. So this will just highlight some of the things that have been mentioned tonight and previous subcommittee meetings. One, I would like to say we are very excited that we're at the precipice of you voting on the remodeling of the skate park. And just to insert myself in there, I would just be, I'd like to blow it up myself, just push down the blow-up button. So with that being said, we're very excited, but we have a dilemma. On the one hand, we can have a demo and remodeling of the skate park, and on the other hand, we display skaters. So to mitigate the displacement of skaters, scooters, bikers, we do have a solution. I mentioned this at the last subcommittee meeting. Let me see. I emailed. Let's see if I can show you. It's a crude drawing, but it's the current skate park. Let me see if this thing works. Is it?
Oh, just, yeah.
You know, I'll wing it. I'll just, oh, thank you. Let's see if I can see that. Okay, so. Okay, so our current skate park is at the very bottom left of the number three. And I tried to get a Google map photo of the mini pump park, which is up there by the square that I drew, and I'll zoom in on that. But, but the mini pump park wouldn't show up. So bottom line with this is if we demoed the current skate park to reduce that horn of the dilemma, we could build a four to thousand, four to 5,000 square foot skate spot right there at our wonderful Ronald Reagan Sports Park, simultaneously when we blow up the other park. It only takes about two to three months, 250 to 350,000 dollars. They have Getz Park in Menifee, they have Escondido Park in Escondido, three months max to build these. They could accommodate skaters and reduce displacement. I've sent that in a PowerPoint to Stu and Erica at the last meeting, and along with Vince, his contact for Spohn Ranch. There's something else, though. If we didn't do that, you know, we could put two skate spots next to Long Canyon Creek and Wolf Creek, right next to the mini pump tracks that are there. Well, at least the one right now at Long Canyon. The beautiful thing about that, and Adam pointed this out and recognized it, before that mini pump track went in there, not a lot of families. After it went in there, families everywhere. Now, just imagine a skate spot right next to the mini pump track. We want families. We want the community to get out and, and, you know, to get together. So that's, that for that point. So our hope is that you would consider this in your future planning. There's another one. So we want to be Neighborhood Drop-In, and we want to be a bridge between the city and the community with the design. We want to be on the design team. An example of how this can work is Fallbrook. They're right on our heels. This year, they're, they're going to break ground with a new skate park, 20,000 square foot. I know Kevin from Fallbrook Incorporated over there. They had two designs that they submitted to the public, and they voted on it, with bowls, flow bowls, all these ramps, and the community was involved. The reason that we're excited about this is we skate and bike. Me personally, I've been to so many skate parks in Southern California, all over, and I've, you know, witnessed their craftsmanship, you might say. But there's another, there's another subtle feature that I didn't appreciate till about a year and a half ago. I saw somebody in a wheelchair at Summerly Skate Park. There was no way for him to roll in. He had no real accommodations there. So he jumped in over coping into a six, seven-foot high bowl, and, I mean, the entire skate park was a breathless. We were just like, and then I realized there are such things as pro wheelchairs, a wheelchairers, like there's even action figures. So in the design of a skate park, I don't want just a ramp to get to a skate park. How about a roll-in for a wheelchair to get inside of a bowl? And not just a roll-in, but a roll-in wide enough. This speaks to the value of equity that Temecula holds dear. So that equitable feature is something that I don't want to overlook. And that wheelchair guy, I'm forgetting his name, he had to go all the way to Fontana just to find a good bowl to roll into. So I think Temecula should be able to find that in a skate park. So almost done here.
Really sorry, but your time's up.
Oh, no problem.
You want to summarize real quick for us?
Yeah. Okay, so to, to compete with the community standard with places like Lake Elsinore, Prince Park, Algonorte, and Carlsbad, a million dollars is not going to cut it. I hope that's a placeholder for a different value. We want to go above and beyond Lake Elsinore, Prince Park, and Carlsbad. This is Temecula. Come on. Not only that, but we have more scooters, skaters, and bikers in our community than they do. So that's just the, the survey data that we've already conducted, but yeah. And last but not least, our skate park is 44,000 square foot. The mother of all skate parks is in San Diego called Linda Vista. It's at 35,000 square foot. It's about 3.2 million dollars. Just saying. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Tom Belik, to be followed by Shannon Morales.
Good evening, everybody. It's good to see you. I know I've had an opportunity to meet all of you in the last six months, or at least a lot of you in the last six months or so, either in person or electronically. Mr. Mayor, it's good to see you. I haven't seen you in a few years since out at the hockey rink. So my name's Tom Belik. I'm president of TIVA. So, my name's Tom Belik, I'm president of TIVA. I'm here on behalf of youth hockey to talk about our, we want this plan to pass. As many of you received emails from families of ours, we've had, we filled a commission meeting here, we've had people at the subcommittee meeting, we've got a couple kids that are probably experiencing their first city council meeting, they're here in uniform. We need this hockey rink. We are a passionate group, we're a small group, but we're very local and proud and about our hockey, and we need it. We can't provide the services to our families without it. It was a punch in the gut when I got back from Missouri from taking a group of kids on a hockey tournament to find out that we may lose the Ronald Reagan rink. My son and daughter grew up playing hockey at that rink. I moved to Temecula because of our hockey league. Our friends are here, we were in Lake Elsinore and traveling to come, and we decided to pick up and move here because of our league. So it was a hit in the gut for myself, it was a hit in the gut for many of our families that we may lose a Ronald Reagan rink. I know a lot of you have met some of the past TIVA members, some of our present TIVA We just, we need this rink. We needed to survive this spring, we just finished registration, we have the most hockey players that we've registered in the last seven years signed up to play. We need it. We're out at the rink probably eight days a week between Margarita and Ronald Reagan. I know the Roller Derby is using the rink. They're doing skateboard classes for now until hopefully, we are in favor of the skateboard community as well and them getting their stuff passed. So, there's two things I ask. Please pass this plan so that we can upgrade our hockey rink. And I know, Mr. Thomas, you mentioned earlier about having the skateboard community involved. We would love to be involved with the planning of the hockey rink. We are an encyclopedia of information. We know tons of people, between our coaches, suppliers of, you know, whether you're looking at Sport Court, or just, we have tons of people that we know. I do a lot of tournament stuff. We need it, we need it. So I'm begging you that you please pass this. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Shannon Morales, and after that is Alex Wardon.
Good evening. I'm just a parent, I have four boys that grew up around here. My youngest is 12 and has been skating since he's 10 months old. I have traveled far and wide for him to find a decent skate park. I don't know what the rulings are now, but it used to be for our local skate park that you had to be five. It actually tore him up that he had to wait till he was five when he could see people that couldn't skate as well as he was in that park. We need something better for our kids. It's great that they're out there being active, but it's not enough, it's not, it doesn't have enough elements to it, it doesn't have enough to it, and so we, our kids deserve this, and it does bring out the families, and that's what Temecula is, is a family place, a family community. So I really hope you guys really give this a good go and make it for our families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alex, and then after Alex is Christian King.
How's it going? How's it going, everybody? I'm Alex Wardon, I'm here for pretty much the community of the skate park for the younger dudes and the older dudes, for the ones that couldn't come out here themselves and make it. A lot of them pretty much like Temecula Skate Park, you know, it's a really cool skate park, but like everyone says, it could have a lot better features. A lot of them aren't really too happy with like everyone saying remodel, do this and that and everything, which is okay because, you know, that skate park's a part of them. So, I was just thinking like maybe the grass banks and stuff, like those stuffs on the side, maybe just do those, and then like we have some ledges and rails, maybe those just need to be touched up. So like the original Temecula Skate Park, I feel like should stay, but there's just little things on the side, like a lot of the street stuff they can do for Temecula Skate Park for that remodel. You can do like little street stuff and everything on the sides until they get a new skate park or something. But, yeah, that's just how I feel about the remodeling, you know, like there's even DIY skate parks, I don't know if you guys in Riverside, they have T Street Ditch, a community of skaters and bikers just went into this ditch and they put in rails, concrete ledges with bricks and little box jumps, and temporarily made a spot because they didn't have anywhere close for them to go for a while, you know? So I was thinking maybe if you could give us a spot to make our own little DIY spot for all the skaters, and it also helps them appreciate that spot themselves because they, you didn't have like the skaters, BMX or scooters, like you can set up a weekend or a day where you have people, show them how to use the right material and everything, but then they can build it themselves, you know what I mean? So that's a pretty cool experience because it'll also bring the community together and everything, and then maybe they'll appreciate, because you know we're having problems with a little bit of trash in the skate park and everything, so maybe they'll appreciate the park themselves a little bit better, you know? So, yeah, thank you, that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Christian King, to be followed by Michael Kirkconnell.
Hi, my name is Christian King, I'm 18 years old, and I'm a skateboarder around here in Temecula. My sponsors are Active Ride Shop and a small company out in San Diego called Rat Skate Co. So my big thing about this whole skate park, I've been really on it, I've always wanted a new skate park coming here. I started skating at 13 years old, I'm 18 now, about five years into it. The first two years into skating, my friends got me into it, and there was nothing but street skating. I would only go to like Temecula Valley High School, skate there, it's kind of all I had. So, after that, like Ronald Reagan wasn't even like public at the time, so I would go to like San Diego, go there, make trips out there, take the bus, take the train. I'd do all I can to like get the correct skate park to make me learn to like, the potential, like, get me to the level I want to get to. And the problem like out here is like, a lot of the kids, I feel like quit, all my friends, I had like a big group of like 15 of us skating, I'm like, two of us are left, and it's sad. A lot of them got into a lot of bad things they shouldn't have got into, a lot of them just fell into the bad group of friends. And it happened because of them getting out of skating not as motivated because there's nothing for them to progress with. They feel like stuck, there's nothing they could, they have nowhere to go. Like, they want to progress, they want to get higher, they want to get better, they want to learn all these ledge tricks, the rail tricks, they want to get better at transition, but they can't because they don't have it. They have to do a two-hour bus ride to San Diego if they want to do that, and most kids don't want to do that. I was the only one that was able to, that was willing to take that step and do that every, I'd do that every weekend. And so, I've experienced all these skate parks, I know what objects are best and what like kids like are into and what kids aren't. I know like, I just, I've seen, I've seen it with all these kids, I'm a very social butterfly, I talk to every kid, everywhere and whenever I am. I go to every, go to LA, I make LA trips, I make San Bernardino trips, I even go to Sacramento sometimes. I've been to Woodward, which is, actually I'm wearing a Woodward jacket right now, it's a big sports facility for kids, it's gymnastics, skating, BMX, scooter riding, it's like a big facility. Kids pay like $1,500 to go, it's a summer camp, and I got, I won a competition to be able to go there, and I just, I know a lot of the kids out here, and I know a lot of kids want a new skate park, and I just don't want to see a lot of kids like how my friends were, stop skating and not skate anymore because they don't have the objects to be able to get as good as they want to get. And it's just sad, I've like, I feel left alone, I stopped skating for like a year because I lost motivation being by myself, having no friends to skate with, and that's sad, because a lot of my friends just really wanted to get good at skating, but they just couldn't because there's nothing to progress on. And I just really want this new skate park to happen. Doesn't have to be destroying Ronald because, honestly, Ronald Reagan is a, that skate park's a staple, like it really is. It was built in, what, 1999? And I feel like, I don't know, I feel like it shouldn't be destroyed, and like, I just, it just feels like a big staple, it feels like we can always go look back at it and just like have fun and bring fun back to it, but always just go to our new and remodeled good skate park and just always look back at those good times of like how we did have like, not the best skate park, but we made good use of it. And like, I don't know, I just don't think it should be destroyed, and plus like, one of my friends over there was saying like the big grass area also inside Ronald Reagan Skate Park, it's a perfect area, you can make a little street section and just remodel that and have it as like an add-on with the skate park and not have to make everyone upset, and anyhow, you can just make everyone happy just by keeping the original one and making a new one. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks much.
And the last in-person speaker is Michael Kirkconnell, and then I have a few emails as well.
How's it going? My name's Michael Kirkconnell, and I'm representing the community of the skate park and BMX community. I think we do need a new skate park. I don't think tearing out our skate park is the right idea. It'll, I, personally, for me, if our skate park were to be closed down, it would just make me want to go and get into places where I wouldn't supposed to be, and that's, fortunately for me, my favorite thing to do is ride a street plaza. The closest thing I can get to that is going and breaking into a school and trespassing, and that's the last thing I want to do. I just want a safe place to go and ride my bike and have fun. I think there's perfect places like Somers Bend coming up, and there's land parcels going around there, and a skate park would be perfect for water conservation. We just lay the concrete out once, we don't have to water any plants, nothing around it, we don't have a parked water grass for nothing. They already have their baseball fields and stuff. Right on the other side of, I believe that's Butterfield Stage where Somers Bend is, there's a couple land parcels right there that I think would be very beneficial, and with all those new families moving into those homes, they could possibly help whoever's moving in there, bring better families and do good for our community. So, I'm for it. I think we should remodel the skate park, whether it's giving us a new one or even tearing it out the old one. I just would like somewhere safe for me to ride and not get harassed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that was the last of the in-person comments, we have a few email comments that I'll go ahead and read into the record now. The first one is from Landon Lasig. I cannot attend the city council meeting on Tuesday, the 22nd, but I'd like to make a comment on this, on the decision about demolishing and rebuilding the Temecula Skate Park. The skate park is legendary, and even though some of the features are weird or outdated, it is unique, and that is what makes it so good. Redoing this skate park would ruin all the fun of having a unique skate park like this, and a new skate park could just be built somewhere else. We need to keep this park as it is, and many people agree with me. The next speaker is Allison Lamos.
Hi, my name is Allison Lamos, and I would like to bring something to your attention. I recently started going to the Ronald Reagan Sports Park after school, and I have met and made so many new friends. I also noticed that the hockey rink and the skate park could use a renovation. I really think it would make such a big impact on the community, students, and families, and we would greatly appreciate it. I truly believe this renovation and budget approval can change people's lives. So many kids my age and younger would look forward to using the facilities more than they already do. This can also encourage other people to try out a new hobby and stay away from negative influences. I know from experience that it's been really hard for people to reconnect with each other since the COVID lockdown, and this can help reassure and inspire those who have had trouble socializing with others and make sure that they feel welcome. I know that the budget and renovation approval will get an enthusiastic and cheerful response from the community that the Temecula City Council has built and developed over the years.
The next speaker is Andrew Guevara. I do not support the remodel of the Temecula Skate Park. As a beginner at skateboarding, I have learned a lot in this park. The skateboard and street skate section is awesome, and everyone has enough space to ride. I would support additional skate parks in our area, giving us variety and add more things like ledgers and grind rails or steps. I love this park because it is good for beginners like me and good for more advanced skaters, too. If you were to add anything to the Temecula Skate Park, I would love more quarter pipes or a mini ramp, with all due respect, Andrew. The next speaker is Will Eck. What's up? I'm a 13-year-old kid, let's get a better skate park up in here, I'm looking for a great bowl. This is not how I want to read this email, but I am just going to read this email like this. I'm envisioning my teenager right now, so, okay. What's up? I'm a 13-year-old kid, let's get a better skate park up in here, I'm looking for a great bowl with steeper quarters and better fly-out. Also, let's see if we could maybe get that block removed above the quarter pipe at the corner of the park. I think everyone would enjoy it more if we replaced it, and if we replaced it with copping or coping. Let's get it. I would say that I think in my so far eight-year career here, that's the email that I would have liked to read Randy-style versus City Clerk-style. So, the next speaker is Alexia Medina. All for renovating the Ronald Reagan Skate Park and make the community a better place and make skaters proud and appreciated for the attention towards them. The next speaker is Ian Bailey.
Hello, my name is Ian Bailey, my family and I have been residents of the city of Temecula for over 10 years. I am an active sports enthusiast, having been involved with everything from the local rugby club to being a part of the Neighborhood Drop-In, our local action sports advocates. First, I would like to thank the city of Temecula for their continued support of local organizations, groups, and your continued betterment of our community. The actions of the city and this council to not only listen but act on community needs is recognized and appreciated. Today, I would personally like to express my appreciation for the council for recognizing the need for more action sports facilities within the city. The city is a wonderful place to raise a family. There are facilities and programs for young children all the way to our seniors, which my family and I have used numerous times. We have sports parks throughout Temecula as well as multiple smaller parks and playgrounds for citizens to enjoy. That being said, until recently with the addition of the pump track, there was not adequate modern facilities for our action sports community. It has not gone unnoticed that Temecula has taken an active interest in this community as of late. Most recently, with the news of the potential Ronald Reagan sports park remodel, I think you meant skate park remodel, as the news of the upcoming potential skate park remodel has spread, I have observed emotions and comments from community members expressing elation to apprehension. The need for modernizing our facility is clear. The current Ronald Reagan Skate Park is outdated in many ways. Not only does it not currently, does it not support current riding styles or techniques, but it can also be dangerous due to its layout and features. This facility 100% needs a remodel. That being said, there is a great concern that if we do not have a facility built prior to the remodel, that our acting sports enthusiasts will not have anywhere to ride within the city of Temecula for months. I would like to strongly encourage the city to consider either building an action sports park facility on the north or south side of town, or set up a temporary facility near the current skate park prior to the demolition and remodel of the Temecula Skate Park. This will allow our local skater, scooter, bike, and roller skate somewhere to ride during construction. I would also like to strongly encourage the city to work closely with the community as well as using a well-known skate park design group to assist in the implementation of the new sports park. Lastly, I would like to suggest that the city work closely with local artists, sculptors, to integrate exciting and beautiful designs within the new skate park, creating not only just a place to ride, but provide a beautiful destination for all the Southern California residents and beyond. Again, I would like to thank the City Council and the city of Temecula for your consideration and your active interest and actions in bettering our community. And the last comment is from Thatcher Seal.
Hello, City Council members, my name is Thatcher Seal, and I have been a skateboarder in this community for over six years. During that time, I have been kicked out of countless areas around the city and mostly told one thing, isn't there a skate park? It is very difficult to get a non-skateboarder to understand why the skate park is not built for skateboards, or at least not up to date with today's standard skate park. There has been concern, there has been concern time and time again about this issue, and the city built not one but two pump tracks and didn't think about maybe using some of that funding to update the current skate park or find a new patch of land. There are many, there are too many to think of around Temecula for a new improved skate park. While pump tracks are great, and they are very used, mainly bikers get use out of them, we only want a place to be able to do what we love every day, and even if the current skate park was any better, it is still the only one in town making it very crowded most of the time. Many parents bring their small children to the skate park to ride their scooters, bikes, or skateboards. While I fully encourage getting the youth to ride, it is very difficult and sometimes dangerous to skate the park with it being so crowded, and sometimes people collide and get injured. With another park, more space would be made at both parks. I could go on about why a new park would be a good addition to Temecula, but I'm going to leave it here, hoping you guys have lots of
to leave it here, hoping you guys have lots of other skateboarders' comments to read. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the in-person comments as well as the emailed comments.
Okay, well, just wanted to put out there, as, as long as I'm mayor this year, you know, feel free to read any public comments as Randy-style. So just know that option's available to you. I think our city manager had a quick comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a couple of points, make it clear to everyone involved. We, the city, you know, Pat Thomas, Luke, myself, we don't profess to be experts in the design of inline rinks or skate parks. And so what you heard tonight was if the council chooses to approve this appropriation, we absolutely will include the skate community, we absolutely will include the bike community, and we will do it the Temecula way, like we've involved other folks in park and recreation development. So I just wanted to make that clear. The second thing is the dollars that you're considering tonight, those are placeholders because we have not done an engineer's estimate. We do not know what it's going to cost to retrofit the, you know, inline rink and cover it or, but, so those are, those are guestimates and they may be higher, it may be lower. But what we thought we would do in the interest of time was put that in front of the city council. This seems an appropriate time. If we do need to revisit that as we go through design, as we go through community input, we'll, we'll reevaluate it. And the last thing is, we heard loud and clear, should you approve these capital projects, they become part of our five-year planning, they become part of our 12-month planning. We will absolutely consider the displacement situation. You know, I think that's something that we will take seriously in the event, and that will be a small period of displacement, but we don't want to lose sight of the greater good, that we're putting something new, shiny and better than what you have out there today. But we will take that under consideration and we'll come up with a reasonable game plan. So I just wanted to add that, so thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, council comments. Mary Ann.
Well, first of all, homies, this is really great. This is exactly what we like to have happen and Temecula really does. We take great pride in the fact that, you know, we are residents and you are residents and so we want to do the very best that we can every single time. And I think if you look around Temecula, you'll see that, you know, it doesn't look like other cities because we do the very best we can every time. And as, as Aaron said, I probably haven't done a lot of skating lately, but that's why you're here and that's why we want you to participate. And this is just the first step to get the, you know, the skates rolling, as it were. So you will have a chance to come and participate in workshops, design workshops. I've heard some great ideas here. And as the city manager said, you know, I think going without skating for six months would be like going without coffee for six months, from what, from what you are saying. I mean, it's part of your life and it's what you do and it's where your friends are and I trust that, you know, you'll, you'll keep that wholesome, those wholesome relationships in place and, you know, you need a place to be active and to, to burn off some of that youthful energy. And parents, I thank you for, for being so involved. This is what makes Temecula, Temecula. The fact that families are involved and the city, we aren't, you know, we may be the city, but we're your neighbors. We've lived here, and I've lived here 34 years, and I love the fact that we all want to make Temecula the best that it can be. So don't think that anything's finished or final or anything, design's not done. I asked Pat just off the top of his head, how long does he think it will take? You know, six months, give or take. So thank you for doing this. I love it when this happens and so continue to stay involved and, you know, help us design the best park that we can design.
Mr. Stewart?
Yeah, well, people always ask, you know, does our voice mean anything? And I'm telling you what, I'm more confused right now after hearing all you guys because I, I really do think, I, I came in with a total different concept of what we were going to do to the skate park, but now I'm kind of leaning more towards, we need to look at other parks where we can put in brand-new skate parks. And so, and, and maybe even use, you know, maybe, I don't know, but I, I heard some, some comments that maybe this skate park with a few additional elements, the existing one may not be a bad thing. So, you know, and again, you guys, you guys are going to have a lot of input in that discussion, so. I don't skate. I don't claim to know anything. My idea of skating was putting skates on the bottom of one by six and that was my skateboard growing up in the early 70s. So I really don't know anything about the sport, so I have to rely on you guys to actually give me that information, so. But a second park, especially as successful as our pump tracks have been, I can totally see how that would be a, you know, maybe not a huge one, but somewhere where you guys could go while we do the renovations to the other ones, so. And whatever we put in ain't going to go away, so if we put something in, it's going to stay there, so. Anyways, that's my thought.
Anyone else? Jessica?
Just a quick comment. No, I have to agree, especially there was some things that Joseph had talked about that I liked. Just a comment to you guys, I know we're talking budget, but just so I can get it out there, especially for families with small kids, when they're at that pump track and they send their other kids over to the skate park, it's kind of hard to keep an eye on everybody, so it would be pretty interesting actually to have a skate park right next to that or something to keep those kids over there. But we actually, myself and Ashwank actually ended up starting this conversation last year with the skate park and everything, so I'm glad to see you guys back out here because we had some of these conversations before with the roller derby area with the hockey rink and stuff. So I'm glad to see you guys back out here and I know our staff is going to do great work working with you guys, so I appreciate the kids coming out as well and voicing their opinion of what they need and please keep coming out, so thank you.
Zach?
No, no. And Ashwank, it feels very militaristic, I can see Ashwank over there. So I've got a couple, couple of points I want to make and first of all, thank you for the presentation. It's a very good presentation and helps us really sort of formulate the path forward. As far as budget engagement, and I think maybe council member Edwards brought it up, this is exactly what I envisioned when we talk about budget engagement. We'd go to budget workshops where no one would show up or one person would show up and make a comment. So to see, you know, 15 or so public comments for something that the community wants, it helps us shape what our community is going to look like 15, 20 years down the road, so thank you for coming here. And I see families that I've known for years, my wife's taught some of the children in this, in this room, and so it's just wonderful to see so many people out here. Before I dive into the, the rink and the skate, I want to talk a little bit about staff and some of the things that, that I pull out and we have this in every one of the, the budget presentations is, you know, the, the staff over the, over, over the years, and I think '07, '08 was their height that, and we're 20 or so below that now. I would argue, and I think I could successfully argue, that we're doing more work now than we were doing in 2007, 2008.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Still significantly below. And I'm certainly not going to speak for staff, but I know that they're putting in a ton of time and, and their heart and soul into this, so. And I'm glad to see that we're bringing some of those positions back. I'd like to see more, personally. I think, I think it would, it would help with everything we're trying to do in the city. It would really help bring that to fruition a little bit quicker and really take the load off of, of a lot of the staff that, that are doing the, the lion's share of the lifting right now, so. And I've beat, beat the drum for an active transportation, trails and transit position at the city for a while. I think that's important. And while that's not in this one, I'll continue to advocate that over the years. But just in general, glad to see we're hiring staff back. I'd certainly like to see more over the, in the next couple of years. Okay, so a couple of things stuck out to me. We had an ultimatum, build a skate park, I'm going to break into a school, so let's not do that, all right? We, we don't have to do that. We can, we can figure an interim solution. Your skate park sucks, but it's also legendary. I heard that, it's like you're, we need to rebuild it and, but wait, no, it's legendary. So like council member Stewart, I'm like way more confused after the public comments and go scroll through Instagram and the skate community and I'm even more confused with what we want. So not to get down into the minutia of what this is going to look like, we're allocating funds to have this conversation moving forward and what that looks like is going to be largely dependent on the involvement that we have in the community, so whether it's the rink or, or the skate park. I do not like the idea of displacement and we've had these conversations about neighborhood parks and, and dispersing amenities throughout the city, which I think is important. We saw that with Long Canyon where we take a, take a, a plot of grass and we turn it into a pump track that is now, when school's not in session, it's, it's completely packed constantly. I think we have an opportunity when we talk about our parks and the, and the park rehabilitation program that we've been, been doing over the years where we create these destination parks with playground equipment, is maybe there's an evolution into, well, what's next, right? Well, we have 40-some-odd parks and, and it's really great when we create these, you know, these themed destination parks, but maybe alongside the pump track along Canyon is a skate spot, right? In lieu of some of the playground equipment that we have. And we have a, a program where we're constantly renovating and, and updating those amenities, so maybe this is one of those interim solutions where in lieu of a playground enhancement, it's a skate spot, right? And it, and sort of spread it out from north to south, from east to west and give folks an opportunity to stay in their community, maybe tack on to some of the trails that we have in our community. I've been to Prince Park, I ride San Luis Obre River Trail all the time and there's a skate park right off the trail, so, you know, you'll see kids on BMX bikes with their skateboards, you know, riding to these places and, and there's a ton of value in that. So, so, you know, higher level thinking of what does that look like when we do renovate our parks? And maybe there's a ton of value in, in doing so. I also don't like the conversation of, you know, and I've heard this a few times and I see it on social media that, you know, oh, they got a pump track. Enough with the pump tracks, I need a skate spot, right? And this sort of like, these smaller groups are fighting amongst each other for resource, right? And the reality is, is like, that pump track or that skate spot is valuable to the community as a whole. And so, you know, and I understand some of the thinking, but I really want to see us move beyond that. You can go to any one of the pump tracks and I would guarantee you that any skate spot that we build is going to be packed constantly. And I just don't like to see people argue about the validity of one amenity for another. Oh, I didn't see anyone on that playground, it's not worth anything. Well, you know, it's a, it's a total, exactly. It's, it's, it's important for the totality of our community, so I'd like to caution the community on that, right? Sort of hold you all accountable to not argue amongst these, each other over amenities. I've been on that side of it, being an advocate, an active transportation advocate for years. I love the engagement and, and when I first met with Neighborhood Drop-In, it was like, hey, I think you guys can get involved, you can be a partner, you've adopted parks now, you're, you're contributing to the community in a, in a really positive way. I think tonight, in what we saw in, in that budget presentation, is, is the beginning of many great things in that action sports world in our community. And we should pat ourselves on the back for that, right? We should be proud of building quality facilities for our children, whether it's a hockey rink that's state-of-the-art or some skate spots or completely blowing up the, the skate park and creating something that would rival, you know, any skate park in the region. So let's look to the good and if there is some minor displacement, let's think that long-term, let's hope that there's not displacement, but long-term, we're creating a ton of value for our community where people can stay here, they can enjoy the sport that they enjoy. You might not play soccer, but we build a ton of soccer fields in the city, right? But you enjoy skateboarding, you enjoy hockey and, and that's equally important for our community as a whole. So I'm certainly in support of, of this mid-year budget adjustment and look forward to seeing this built and seeing more parks built, more skate parks, more skate spots built throughout the community. But we'll dive into that in subcommittee and, and future budget workshops as well, so. Thank you all for coming.
Okay, one more quick thing that I noticed because I live right down the street from that day middle school pump track, is when that pump track is packed, people are on the playground too. I mean, it really activates the entire park. That's what I kind of noticed. It was like, it wasn't just all the kids at the pump track, but some moms and kids were all, also on the playground at the same time. So that's the cool part about plopping these things and it could next be a, you know, a skate park, you know, in the corner of, you know, of huge park that we have. So I, I think we get kind of two benefits when we put these active sports categories in these parks because it gives mothers with kids from two to 14 maybe, a place to go and everybody's happy, so.
Well, my turn. Just great coming out, saying what you had to say tonight, you know, all the kids, all the parents, all the family members, it's good to see the hockey folks out here. It's nice to finally be talking about fixing that crack and getting that surface done. I know it's been a bane of your existence for, for too many years, so, you know, it's exciting to see all this move forward. This is the process, you know? If you all come out, you know, several years ago, somebody came up and started talking about pickleball courts and I sat here and I was like, I have no idea what you're talking about, right? I still kind of don't, but I'm just going to let it go and, and assume that pickleball is a good investment in our community. We know the value of what skate parks and, and, you know, the, the pump tracks and all that brings, so this is a great process. Your involvement has helped us, you know, understand what's necessary, help us focus on, you know, sort of moving forward. And I think given staff a whole lot of direction, we're, we're listening to it all and we're looking forward to working with you all on, on making this happen. This is, you know, this is that opportunity that we all, you know, kind of talk about and it's like an 80s, 80s movie where we're all going to go, you know, hang out and listen to, you know, Bon Jovi afterwards together or something and go to the community teen center or whatever, right?
What up, Bon Jovi?
Yeah, 80s, it was an 80s thing, so.
Yeah.
So, but, but seriously, this is cool, right? This is exactly what this process was meant for, so thank you all for participating in that. And, and really, I'd encourage other folks in the community who are watching this, if you're still up and it's 10 o'clock and you're, you're excited about, you know, what might happen next, come out, get engaged, have the conversation, you know? And like Zach said, some of the first budget hearings I was at as a council member were pretty darn dry from a community perspective because nobody would show up, you know? And we would be talking about a multimillion-dollar project and we'd have like one public speaker. And so this is, is hugely refreshing for all of us and, and I'm, I'm just so proud of you all for doing this and look forward to, to engaging with you on, on this and getting some good work done in the city, so thank you for that. Now, back to some of the other core issues on the budget though, that I want to highlight so we don't lose sight of it, is talk a little bit about the law enforcement. You know, we, we took a shift in, in putting our resources into a metro team into Old Town because we knew we had big problems in Old Town. And that shift in resources meant that our, you know, our coverage has always been top-notch in the City of Temecula, but as our city changes and as our resources, staffing and needs change, we are backfilling all that with, you know, five additional positions. And I want to make note of that because that's important, right? We're always trying to advance and, and I think something that was said at our Blue Ribbon Commission the other night had to do with, you know, I, I was talking about how we, we use the one-to-a-thousand ratio and we talk about that as a metric. It's an old metric and it's probably not valid as much as it used to be, right? And so we have an opportunity as a city to really start looking at that investment in public safety. You know, this year's theme is Mayor's Temecula Safe, it's all about public safety and I've always said, if you can't get that right, you have no business doing anything else. Well, as the 16th safest city in the United States right now, you know, we have business doing everything else like skate parks and all that, but it doesn't mean we let our resources slide on the public safety side. So I was happy to see that, that we're, you know, enhancing those resources yet again to make sure we protect this community as much as possible. I'd also say, you know, I'm, I'm looking forward to Luke's shop getting two additional code enforcement positions because what that means for the community is we're no longer just being reactive when it comes to calls for service or, or complaints about code or other issues. It means that those two positions allow us to become proactive and identify issues within the community that need, you know, attention. So that's, that's, I think from, from my perspective, you know, we've always talked about moving from that sort of development city to a maintenance city. And this is, this is that shift that you're seeing happen right now in the City of Temecula and it is exciting because as a city, we refuse to fall into mediocrity, right? You see from a public works perspective, all the You see, from a public works perspective, all the money that's going into enhancing our roads and our infrastructure, you know, we're not going to let ourselves fall into a pothole that we can't afford to get out of. And so this, you know, this budget, this realignment here, you know, midway through the year is really an exciting thing for all of us. I would ask for one thing, though, from a public safety perspective, and that is, I'd like to reach out to, or have our folks in both Sheriff's Department and Cal Fire. You know, there are resources and things, I know you all staff and, and put remarkable resources into what you do, but I also know that for some of the resources that are out there, it's, you know, we often talk about like the Cadillac version of things, right? Well, it's not the Cadillac version, there are really good versions of resources and tools that both law enforcement and fire have available to them that we don't necessarily have in the city. And, you know, it's, you know, it's one of those situations where, say, you know, Cal Fire, for some of the resources that you have for, say, extracting folks from vehicles, you know, traffic collisions and so forth, there, you know, there are a lot of resources that we don't have in the city that we probably could have, or enhance those resources with, with additional versions of them. And so, the same goes for law enforcement, right? What are those tools and things that could take us to that next level? Because while we may be the sixteenth safest city in, you know, the United States, I wouldn't mind being number one, so, you know, what do we do to, you know, keep, keep pace and, and keep moving up that ladder? Because, you know, I'd like to see us work with, you know, city manager and consent to the council to, you know, take the opportunity, at least right now, to work with PD and fire and, and identify those resources that we could be investing in that are atypical of what we have with the Sheriff's Department or Cal Fire in sort of the standard agreement, right? And I, I'd just like to see us move in that direction and see what it would take to, to bump things up a bit. That's, that's all I've got on, on my list of, of things, but really appreciate everybody coming out tonight and having a, having an outstanding conversation on this. So, I think I'm looking for a motion and a second here.
Motion approval.
Second. All right, please cast your votes. Oh, and not surprising, that passes five-zero. Thank you all. All right. Items for future council agendas. Do we have anything this night, evening? Nothing. Okay, let's see. City manager report.
Just real quickly, Mr. Mayor, I, I just want to say thanks to you, to the city council for, for approving that mid-year. That was a very heavy mid-year, more reminiscent of an operating budget that we typically go through in May, so maybe in May it'll be lighter, because we did it in February. But I just want to say thanks for the support, for the staff. I'm really looking forward to adding those positions, they're in the right locations. We've, we've been patient, we weathered an amazing storm here over the last two years, we weathered the Great Recession, and, and we can afford to do this now and sort of continue the agenda the city council has set out, so I'm very grateful to all of you. And I'm really excited also about the capital projects that we just put on Pat Thomas's plate, and we're going to be busy for five years, maybe more, just building out the city of Temecula and doing bigger and better things, so our future remains very bright. So, again, I just want to say thank you for that support.
Thank you. And city attorney report.
Nothing to report.
All right, fantastic. Well, we're going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting to the next regularly scheduled meeting on March 8th. Thank you all. (applause).[1792.33]